Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 27, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And in a few minutes, I'll give you a few points about our remote participation procedures. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. And also, if anyone is recording the meeting, please notify us. I'll give you a few seconds since you may be muted. Please let us know if anyone is recording. You can record it, but we just need to know. All right. So let's go on. Here are some points about our remote participation. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 477-194-287. That's 477-194-287. Or, as I mentioned, you can join the meeting using Microsoft Teams through the link that is on our agenda that's posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And, as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And in accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. So procedural steps. We'll start with a roll call of all board members. If you are a non-board member, a member of the public, when recognized by the chair and you are speaking, would you please repeat your name and also the last four digits of your phone number? If you've connected by phone, we just need to clearly identify all speakers on the call at the meeting. And also, as I mentioned, that after an agenda item is discussed by the planning board, I will ask for any comments or questions from the public. All votes taken tonight by the planning board will be taken by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close with a verbal confirmation of adjournment, and we will note the time of adjournment. So first, let's start with a roll call of planning board members. And also, I should mention, if you are not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphone and disable your video? With the exception of planning board members, kindly keep your videos on. So let's do our roll call. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Thank you. Roger Griffin, are you present?
Present. Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. Warren Chain, are you present?
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Dubus, are you present?
Bob Dubus, I'm present.
And Bob Wirthschafter, have you joined us? Are you present? Just check. I still don't see that Bob Wirthschafter has joined us. I hope he will be joining us. All right, great. And then before we get started, I'm going to ask if any board members need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's-
We're missing one person, Chairman, Mrs. Chairman.
Bob Dubus?
No. Yeah, but aren't we missing Tom?
Tom. Did I not ask for Tom? I thought I asked for Tom to say present. My apologies if I didn't. Tom Gagin, are you present?
Tom Gagin, present.
All right, great. Sorry about that. I had you on my list after Warren, and sorry if I omitted you. I didn't mean to. All right. And Bob Wirthschafter, we're still waiting for him. So may I ask if any board member has to recuse themselves from any matter on tonight's agenda?
Bob Dubus has to recuse himself for 279 Crowell Road.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. So let's go to our, before we go to our first agenda item, there has been a request from one of our applicants to change the order of the agenda. The request is coming from Ben Zender, who is representing 782-784 Main Street. They would like to be heard first on the agenda due to a scheduling conflict. We have also talked to Dr. Dunkinson, who has very courteously agreed to go after Mr. Zender if the board so agrees. So may I ask the board, are there any objections to this? Would you agree to this change of order in our considerations tonight? If there are no objections from the board after we do the minutes, we'll continue right into 782-784 Main Street and put the other matters following. So first, let's consider the minutes for the June 13 meeting. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes?
Art Spru. I have one typo error.
Yes?
I picked up on page two underneath Recommendations to zoning board.
Yes.
Third paragraph, right at the end there, it says postponed out comment. I think it should be our comment.
All right, great. Thank you. So, yes, I see postpone our comment. Any other changes, corrections, amendments to the minutes? If there are none, may I have a motion to-
Move to approve.
All right, with amendment as stated by Arthur. So-
Art Spru, second.
Okay, so Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And Bob Wirthschafter, are you present? Tom Gagin and Roger Griffin were not present at June 13, so they will need to abstain. Did I miss anyone? So this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to approve the minutes for June 13. Great. So now, let's move with the approval of the board and the courtesy of Dr. Dunkinson. Let's move to the consideration of the formal site plan approval for 782-784 Main Street.
Madam Chair, yes? I'm just, if we could, we have the release of covenant for 279 Crowell Road. Could we just? They have not provided anything. I think that we should continue this matter at least until the second meeting in July, if not the first meeting in August. We did not receive a formal request on this at this point in time. And I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure in case anybody was here for that item that we-
Great. Is there anyone here to present that item to the board? So I agree with Katie. I think we should continue it at the earliest to July 25 meeting. So since we have not received any new information on this matter, may I have a motion to continue this matter of 279 Crowell Road to the July 25 meeting?
Art Spru, make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second to the motion?
Roger Griffin will second the motion.
All right. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
And Bob Wirthschafter, are you connected? I don't have Bob Wirthschafter. Bob Dubus has recused himself. This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we continue this matter to the July 25 meeting of the Planning Board for 279. Yes?
I don't mean, I didn't want you to get off on something else before. How many times can we let this pass by? You know, I mean, this has been almost nine months, and I'm pretty flexible with letting people get by. But this, but this seems to be a little bit out of the ordinary right at the moment.
It does, and we keep continuing it, and we keep getting no response, and then we keep continuing it again. So I'm just going to ask Katie if there's another way that we can handle this matter so that it's not on every agenda. Could we just continue it further out?
We certainly could. My suggestion is at the July 25 meeting, if we don't have anything, we could deny the request at that point in time. It is a request for a release of covenant, and then the applicant would have to reapply, so it would take it off the agenda for the time being.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dubus?
Tom Gagin. I would suggest-
Oh, Tom Gagin, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. I've been called by other names. I would suggest, in terms of what Bob is concerned with, that we set a precedence. And the precedent should be that at some point, we make a decision that we've given the applicant very reasonable time to respond to the board. My suggestion would be that we continue to the July 25 under condition, and it should be conveyed back to the applicant, that if they don't appear or give us the information we're looking for on that meeting, that we will vote not to extend it another time. I mean, we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere. And I think we've been more than fair at giving them enough ample time to get their ducks in a row, so to speak. And then again, for the second time repeating, it kind of establishes a precedence for the board that at some point in the distance, we can't just continue and continue. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, you know, certainly, we could indicate to the applicant that we need to have some response. But I don't think we can say we will vote. We actually, we just have to vote. So I don't think we can predict what the board's vote will be or say that in advance. But I think certainly, we could indicate to the applicant that, you know, we do need the information now and that we, you know, cannot continue to continue. But I do think that, so yes, and I agree. I think we don't want to have this practice where we're continuing things forever and ever. So thanks, Tom. So now, I think, out of consideration for Mr. Zender, who I know has a scheduling conflict, I would like to move on to 782-784 Main Street, which is a formal site plan approval for the proposed demolition of the existing structure at 784 Main Street and the construction of a new building with professional office space on the first floor and three two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. So do I understand, Mr. Zender, will you go first or will Leslie go first?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Ben Zender. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay, great. Well, it's nice to see you all again. My name is Ben Zender, and I will begin the presentation with your permission, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Ben Zender from Orleans. And with me on the line is Thad Eldridge, who's our site engineer. Leslie Schneber is our architect, and also, we have Matt Cole on the line, who's the principal of the owner LLC of the property. The board members may remember that this was in front of you in early November of 2021 on a preliminary, and it was also in front of you several years ago for a slightly different project that we withdrew the application at some point because we were really having a difficulty with the zoning relief that was required at that time. The proposal here is to, as the advertisement told you, is to remove the rear building, which has four apartments, residential apartments, which are in fairly dilapidated condition, and replace it with commercial office space with apartments above, which, as the board knows, is a use of apartments incidentally commercially used, which is permitted in the GB2 district by a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And our intention is if we receive a site plan review approval by this board, we will then submit the application to the board of appeals from the special permit. For your information, the proposal that's in front of you has already been approved by historic. And so, you know, and what we have in front of you, and Thad can explain it in greater detail, is a site plan that actually reduces the non-conformities in the property slightly by moving the building further away from the sideline setbacks on both sides. And then you have on the plan the particulars of the design and the architecture, the lighting plans, the floor plans, the parking plans. And also, you have the benefit of the staff report, which indicates that we've really done the best we can to comply with all the standards and criteria in your bylaw. And I just saw it just coming in today, and I want to thank staff for the response on the drainage calculations as well. So with that sort of brief overview of the project, I'd really, if the chair is willing, like to be able to hear from the members as to what concerns and questions they have, and then direct those to Leslie and Thad, so they can try to answer those questions for you. And we really hope you see fit to grant, you know, an approval without conditions, or at a minimal condition that zoning relief is obtained. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. I'm just going to ask Leslie and Thad if you do have something from your side that you'd like to present to the board before we go through with comments and questions from the board? Either Leslie or Thad. If not, we can go ahead and-
Thad Eldridge here. I'm just ready for questions.
Okay, great. And Leslie, how about you?
Yeah, I reiterate, same. Ready for whatever the board would like to ask and talk about.
Great, great. Thank you. And thank you, Ben. I think you summarized it well. We have seen this before. This is a modified plan with some changes to both to the site plan as well as how you've reconfigured the interior space and defined the change of use. So Art Spru, do you have questions, comments, either for Ben Zender or Leslie or Thad?
Well, I have a few comments.
Okay.
I take a look at this. I think one of the major issues that we had last time was parking and some of the circulation. And I still see some challenges associated with this. When I took a look at the count associated with parking, and I'm taking a look at the space and the uses here, it doesn't really line up, all right? The bylaw says two spaces for each unit. That's eight. I think the challenge is on the business side. There are, in my account, there are four offices in the existing front building. There are five offices in the proposed rear building, plus one shared workspace. Now, the bylaws only talk about, in one section of the bylaw, it talks about parking to be for 150, every 150 square feet for client use areas. However, there are employees here that are working. I count that there could be as many as 10 employees based on the office spaces that you have here. So once you put that into the picture, you're not dealing with just 12 or 14 or 16 spaces. You're dealing with well over 18 spaces. It's, we have an option, as by law, is if we think the uses demand more spaces, I think that we have an obligation to actually look into it. In this particular case, I think we do. If you set aside eight spaces right now for the residents, and those should be reserved. Those should not be used by the other businesses and that. So in case they want to be there all day long, that really dwindles the down so that there would only be five left over for all the rest of the office uses. It doesn't jive. So I think there has to be a resolution based on the uses that are proposed there in the space with all of these offices providing sufficient parking there. That's the first thing. The next challenge is on some of the traffic circulation. Before, on the previous site plan, the access in was from the east side of the building on 782, circulate around, and you could exit out the west side. Now, everything is coming in just on the west side. Now, that area there is width of about 30 feet from the building from 782 all the way to the adjacent property next door. You take out the 10 feet for parking, that's 20 feet wide there. But only six and a half feet of that is actually on the applicant site. So there is really no access that is on the applicant site. It's all on the adjacent property. Now, there's an easement there, but there's no information associated with what that access easement is. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. This particular plan that is up, that you have up there, that doesn't show that the information, which has the next issue, the site plan from east, from the civil engineer, that, once you get to the rear of the property, the width of that access back to the parking in the rear, that's only 13 feet wide. There's a utility pole there and an island. That should be at a minimum, if you're talking about two-way traffic circulation, in your 20 feet. That's what we call for in the bylaw. So those two things are, to me, some really challenging issues that have to be dealt with by the applicant before we even get into some of the other things associated with it. I think that the other thing from a pedestrian aspect, there is a walkway on the east side, which ends abruptly into the parking lot. It's like extended another few more feet, connected up to the sidewalk into the rear building. That only makes sense over there. So that, to me, I'm not quite sure why that just abruptly ended rather than just continuing now. Those are just a couple of things I was picking up on it. And I think that parking and circulation issue is, to me, is a major issue here that has to be resolved. That's what I have for right now, Catherine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to ask a couple of questions of Thad. So the walkway on the east, can you extend that to the end of the parking lot, or did you cut it off because the property line kind of forms a encroaches upon it there?
Thad Eldridge here. We could extend it and have people walking through the reserved aisle for handicapped. At one of our previous meetings, the planning board really wanted that walking access on the east side. So while we took away the entrance on that side, we maintained that walking path. This will give the opportunity for some green space in the front.
Right. You could extend it at least somewhat without intruding on the handicap parking space, however.
Correct.
Yeah, so-
Once we get towards that, though, it'll be in the striped part of the handicap- Right. Once we get towards that, though, it'll be in the, in the striped part of the handicap space, the man accessible space, which.
Right. And then I'm gonna ask Ben Zender if you have more details for Mr. Spru and for the board about the easement in terms of the west side two-way traffic lane. Because it's, it's absolutely right that only part of it falls on the property per se.
Through you, Madam Chair. No, I don't have that at hand right now, but I'll.
Yes, Thad. Go ahead.
Yeah, I actually have it in hand right now.
Okay.
It's very simple. It's just a common easement. That this property enjoys rights on the other side over the part that's presently used as a driveway adjoining the land. And there's a cross easement for, for a Merrill to be on the subject property. Twenty feet between the parking spaces for a good common entrance and egress.
Okay, and then Thad, can I ask you, can you review how you've done the parking calculations vis-à-vis what Arthur's brought up about the number of office spaces?
Well, if I could start with one of the typical requests that we make of the board. Generally, the residential units are not using the parking during the day when the businesses are, and the opposite holds true at night. A certain number of parking spaces, we would like to double up that way. And, and that will help overcome the limited parking that we have here. Additionally, there are town parking areas nearby that are for everybody. Not just for the people who put the signs up in front of them.
Okay, so, all right, great, thank you. So let's go on to Warren Chain, questions and comments, especially for Thad and Leslie Schneberker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is Warren. I had questions about parking spaces. They've already been raised, I think, in more detail than I had thought through. I just can't see with the number of offices that they have, the employees plus visitors to those offices, that there's anything left for the, for the apartments. I had, in addition, a couple of other issues. Is it, is it located on the plans? I didn't see it where all of the mailboxes, for example, would be on this. Is it gonna be one large rack of mailboxes? Or will a postman be actually wandering to each apartment and each office? What I'm getting at in here is Amazon delivery trucks and FedEx and, and postmen wandering around and just creating, again, more traffic flow. Has that been thought about as to where the, the mailboxes would be?
Thad, do you wanna address that?
Sure, Thad Eldridge. On the left-hand side of the plan, you will see the town of Chatham Post Office, oh two six three three. I think that, that's a short enough walk that we can, we can have the day-to-day mail through a box there.
Okay. I mean, that's a good answer, as I say. So there's no intent that there be mail delivery on the site?
I mean, obviously, the, the FedEx, UPS, they're going to be coming to the site, but they come already.
Well, okay, it just, it, it just sort of dovetails on the, the questions about adequacy of parking and circulation. Also had a couple of questions about the paving of the site. I assume you're gonna tear it all up and therefore have to repave the entire thing. Would that include, you know, asphalt paving and it would, would you be repaving all of the, the easement area as well? And are there issues with respect to drainage that might come about as a result of that complete repaving? Or is that not the intent?
The proposal is to repave. We are regrading that parking lot. And the drainage has been designed to, to accommodate all the flow.
And you would be repaving the easement area as well?
I believe so. If Matt's on the line, he can certainly answer it.
Matt? Can you?
Sure, Matt Cole. Sure, thank you. Matt Cole, Principal of seven eighty-two Main Street LLC. Because that is the neighbor's property, I don't want to make, make promises without speaking with them. Certainly, we'd have discussions with them and, and try to coordinate where it made sense. But everything within my property, within the property line, the plan is to repave.
It would appear to me that the question of circulation and adequate parking has already been raised. And if, if the easement area is not repaved, then that seems to me raises the issue of circulation to a slightly higher level. It clearly would, it would also look better if it was repaved. So that's a comment at this point, not a, not a suggestion even. Another question I had was with respect to lighting, a couple of. The lighting plan, I think, is really quite good. But I did not see any lighting along the proposed concrete walkway to the east other than a, one light up on the, basically on the corner of the building. Is adequate for that, or is that gonna be a very dark walkway in the evenings?
Thad, do you want to comment on that?
I believe Leslie did the lighting plan.
All right. Is Leslie, are you still connected?
I am still connected. Actually, Dave Hawk designed the lighting, the landscape lighting plan. But there is, I do see one light. And the feeling is that will be adequate along with the building lights without being overwhelming. The pathway is for residents in the evening, but we don't wanna, we don't have any other lighting and don't think that it's needed, that it would be too much.
Again, I don't overstate the issue because I think I have some sensitivity to the circulation being restricted by putting, taking out that access on the east. But it does seem to me that some type of low-level garden-type lighting somewhere along that concrete walkway would be appropriate. If, if not for aesthetic reasons, then really just for safety reasons. I have the same question about the walkway to the west of the proposed building. There is a light at each end and maybe one in the middle, but there are some grade changes and so on. It's just not clear to me that, that the, the lighting is adequate for the entrances to the building as well as the grade changes and the steps and so on that are there. And again, I don't see any lighting over in the area of the trash area or on the east side of the proposed building. And, you know, just a question, the lighting plan seems to be well thought out for the lights that are there. But it does seem to me there are gonna be some very dark areas there. And so would suggest that somebody at least think through and make sure that you're not gonna have pitch blackness out there. At, either at the outside of the offices or the proposed buildings. Well, let me see. I have one other question, or to drive right to my notes. The trash area that is shown is presumably, there's only one. So presumably that's for the offices plus all of the apartments as well. Is it really adequate? It would seem to me there's a place for one, one dumpster to get in there. Just a question, is that gonna be adequate for this? And the access to that is what, out, down the stairs, out the, all the way down the walk, all around the building to get to the trash? Just a question, is that the only trash area? And has it been thought about as to whether it is adequate for the amount of trash which will be generated?
That is the only trash area. It's an eight-by-ten enclosure to be suitable for a small dumpster or several bins. It should be adequate for four housing units and two offices. Two, maybe three pickups a week.
You know, each tenant would have their own trash disposal containers. Is that the, is that the plan?
I don't believe so. I thought it was uncommon.
No, that's my question is all. What is the plan? And is, and is a, a single dumpster what is proposed and is that appropriate and adequate, really? If you think it is, the eight-by-ten enclosure that has a door on it, those doors tend to be there for about a week and then they're open all the time or missing. So, you know, there's the aesthetics of it as well. But at any rate, I raise a question as to whether it's been thought about as to whether it's adequate or not. And whether the common, whether it would be common or individual trash receptacles. If it's individual, then I'd say, you know, it's probably not adequate. You're gonna need a couple of trash cans for every tenant. If it's a single common thing, then presumably that obviously is gonna require arrangements to be made for, for trash pickup. And I'm not sure that it is adequate. Requirement or request to, for you. But the lighting and the, again, the parking issues. And, you know, paving of the easement area as well as circulation, that pretty well covered all of my, my comments. I think it's a very nice proposal in terms of the structures, by the way. And I think a lot of, a lot of thought has gone into both the lighting and the landscape plan, which, which I do think is, is, is useful. One last question of interest, is there gonna be an irrigation system on the landscaping?
Thad, do you want to answer that?
I presume that there will be an irrigation system.
And so that, that really sort of starts presuming that there's gonna be either a landlord is gonna take all the bills for the water and the leases would be no charge for the water, I assume, something like that? Or is it presumed that you're going to slice this up into owner parcels? So it is a condominium kind of an arrangement? The trash collection, the, the plowing of the driveway, the irrigation charges, things like that. As well as, I, I assume lawn maintenance and so on, since I don't think there's suggested that there would be place for garden equipment for the apartment dwellers.
Yeah, it's, the proposal, as I understand it now, is for a landlord situation where everything's taken care of and covered.
Comments?
Warren, is that it?
That's it.
Great. Tom Gagin, questions and comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin. I'd like to continue with the concerns for the first two members about parking. I think in this day and age, it would be unwarranted for us to assume that people who are living in the apartments would be not there during the day, particularly with the way in which businesses are outsourcing and people are working from home. So, I, I believe that the issue of parking needs to be addressed so that we could try to have more adequate space for the parking. And to Warren's comment about the aesthetics of the building is very pleasing. And certainly would like to be very supportive of this project if we can overcome the detail that has been mentioned so far. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tom. And Bob Duppis?
Bob Duppis here. So I, I believe that the sidewalk ends on the east side and there's a telephone pole. Looks to me like it's about a foot and a half or two feet in on the sidewalk. What I, I'm wondering if they could paint a sidewalk and, and incorporate some of the handicap part of it, so when they're walking, they, they knew that the line would go through the handicap to the, to the building and maybe go that way and would be sufficient rather than try to put a concrete raised, concrete walkway and encroach on everything. Maybe a little paint job might, might take care of that situation. I have a big concern about the parking lot. When they tear the building down, they're gonna use excavators, dump trucks, heavy equipment of all kinds. And when they go to put the foundations in with the lumber trucks, the concrete trucks, the excavators, the landscaping and everything, I do honestly believe that that roadway will not stand up on the easement. And there should be a provision to, to take a picture before and take a picture during. Because I would assume that most of this is gonna take place in the winter and, you know, our ground is very unstable with the thawing and freezing. So I, I honestly believe that they should contact the next-door neighbor and any damages they should accrue to themselves. And, and like, I believe one of the other gentlemen in our group, if you pave that, that means that they will definitely see the line coming and going in there. And I got a feeling they might even have to stripe it to keep cars in and out of there. The parking, I, I have concerns about that, but I can't. It's not my thing to, to, to design parking for people, but I don't know of any public places that are close by. And if you ask the post office square, that's all private. So that's not usable. The Ford garage parking is not usable. Parking is not usable. So I don't know where, where is in really walking distance of a parking, a public parking lot.
Well, I wouldn't ask the post office square people. Every parking space in front of that building is part of town parking by easement. The deeds are referenced on the site plan.
In front of the post office, Thad, is that what you're referring to?
In front of the post office, on the post office road and in front of post office square, those shops there, that's all town parking. They keep putting up signs saying that it's private parking, and they keep getting asked to take the signs down because it's town parking.
And then there's also veterans field parking?
We all know, we all know that that is very congested in there. So why would we can add to the congestion?
Is the parking on the other side of Red Nun is town public parking?
Right, and I just want to ask again. I see, including the handicap stripe space, I see thirteen spaces on the site as designed right now. Is that correct?
There are fourteen or, there are fourteen or fifteen spaces. The fifteenth space is a double stack. So, when two people are at seven eighty-two and one's not planning on leaving before the other, they'll be able to get two at the end. We've called out fourteen of the tables, but there is that extra.
I'm only, can you use your, your arrow? I don't know if, are you screen sharing, Thad? Can you count out those fourteen for us? Or maybe Katie can, because I'm counting thirteen. Oh, there's that one. All right, I'm, okay. And those two, so, and then? And then are there two there? Yes, those are two. So now I'm actually counting thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. I'm counting sixteen spaces, correct? Is that correct?
I don't think so.
I counted fifteen, Catherine.
Is that Arthur? Okay. I believe that's another space. So is it fifteen, Thad, or sixteen? Including the handicap?
We're calling it fourteen, and with the handicap, you can't count those stripes.
You don't? Okay, you can't. Okay, great. All right.
And so, it's fourteen spaces that are, that people can come and go. The fifteenth space is that, that extra one of the northeast quarter of seven eighty-two. The fifteenth space is that, that extra one of the northeast quarter of seven eighty-two.
Right.
And again, that's for somebody who's going to be there all day and they can park there and be blocked in.
Right, they would be blocked in. Okay, got it. And according to the amount of office space, Arthur, can you remind us how many spaces? Or sad should be there.
I think the, the concern I had is, is there are no, there are quite a number of offices in both the buildings.
Right.
I counted a total, including the shared workspace with the new proposed area of ten office areas. So are there,
Right.
are there ten actual other individuals or employees who are going to be working in these offices? And where are they going to park in addition to the residents that are there? Tom Gagin brought up a very interesting point about that, that, you know, there's a lot of work from home right now. So there's, there's no assurance that they can be shared with the residents at this point. And I, and I think that's a very valid point. And I, I think we have to account for that. So I, I think there has to be some reckoning associated with the number of offices that are proposed there. Employees as well as a common area that supposedly is for, for customer base. And then, and then the eight set asides that have to be for residents. And I, I think the eight set asides have to be assured. So that a resident who is there at any point during the day, that they would have a place to park. So that, that doesn't leave you enough for all the business side of it. And so what do you do? You sacrifice one for the other? I, I don't think either of that is fair is to sacrifice one for the other. I think you need to address what is being proposed to make sure it's sufficient. That, that was my whole point in the beginning.
Yeah. So Ted, do you have a calculation? I, I mean, we need to do this formally because basically we're going to have to be waiving parking spaces if the board is to approve this.
If, if I may.
Yes, please go ahead.
This is Leslie Schneberger, uh, SP Design Architect. Um, at, public spaces by the town's bylaw, um, at the back building that we're proposing are, is based on four hundred and eighty-two square feet. At the front existing building, it's based on three hundred and forty-eight square feet, putting us up at eight hundred and thirty square feet. You go by the recommendation of one space per a hundred and fifty square feet of public use, that's six spaces. The eight, the four apartments require, um, two spaces each, that's eight spaces. Needing, requiring a total of fourteen parking spaces. The site plan that we just reviewed has fifteen parking spaces. One of them, however, is a double loaded parking spot that does, you know, need access of, you know, if it's mutual from an apartment, a place that you can get yourself in and out. Uh, I do believe that, um, the chat, the community center, the parking behind that is public parking as well as, um, the veterans field parking next to the Red Nun. Um, it's not immediately at the building, but it's really not that far. And I do think that people can walk down the road with the sidewalk. So, um, I feel it's quite reasonable to say that this can work for employees that park a little further away and walk to work from their parking space. It's perfectly normal in downtown and in many cities.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Zender.
Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you, Leslie. Um, and, and a couple more quick points. One is, you know, the, the virtual environment, environment works the other way as well, which means that these businesses, including, you know, the proposals here right now, um, has employees working from home, which means that the commercial spaces are, are less used in terms of people coming into work. Um, they, they flex work. Um, much of this work is done virtually by the employees as well. So I think that, that virtual situation is going to, is going to benefit the parking lot as much as it's going to hurt it. And secondly, a- and, and I don't have any data to support this, but I think that is right, that these complementary uses of these parking lots, meaning residential uses versus commercial uses are identified in your site plan review by law, which talks about, um, one of the factors in, in special circumstances is use of a comic parking lot for different uses having peak demands occurring at different times. And although you, you really want to have spaces available for the apartments, um, the demands for the residences generally are, are for, you know, generally speaking, are for sleeping and residing, which is the nighttime use. And, and it's clear that these offices just really, with some rare exceptions, aren't used after working hours, which is only five o'clock with some late work. So, um, when you couple that with Leslie's explanation of compliance with the bylaw, I, I don't think that this, it's tight. It's a tight site. And part of the reason for that, that, that office space is because we have to meet that fifty percent, more than fifty percent commercial use. So, you know, these offices, my experience with these offices is that you have, you have single people using multiple offices for laying things out, for holding conferences, things like that. So I, I don't think we're really that far off on parking, although we will look at it and the members' comments are, are very well taken.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zender. And this is Catherine. And I guess what I'm getting at, I do thank you, Leslie, is, I mean, just strictly speaking, according to our bylaw, this is not retail space, it's office space. We go by square footage. Your calculation according to the square footage of the office space is six spaces required. And according to the residence is eight spaces required, which is fourteen spaces, which is what is given on the plan. So, um, I would, yes, it's tight, but it, but you do have, according to the bylaw, you've provided sufficient parking spaces, um, according to those calculations.
If I may add one more, the
Ted, yes.
Seven A two, age or other characteristics of occupants which reduce their auto usage. These apartments, you can expect probably an average of one and a half cars per apartment. In other situations similar to this, we see a lot of one car per apartment situations and some apartments with two. So probably one and a quarter to one and a half cars per unit in actuality.
Okay. All right. But I, I think strictly speaking, it, you know, we don't even need to consider waiving spaces because strictly speaking, according to the square footage and the, you know, eight spaces for the residential area, you've provided sufficient parking. So, because you have fourteen spaces. Okay, so, hold on a minute. One moment, please. I've lost my list. Um, so I'm sorry, I've just temporarily misplaced my list. Um, so we had Bob Dubus, Tom Gagin, Warren spoke, Art spoke. Is Bob Wurchefter connected with us yet? I don't see him connected. So I will ask Roger if you have more questions or comments for Mr. Zender or Leslie. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I, I guess it's a general question. I, I remember for some notes, I thought we talked about the possibility of there being on the apartments, they were going to be including a half bath along with a full bathroom. Maybe I, I, I know I wrote it. I was like, I guess the thing as I say that is I, um, being landlord, um, I think when I see something like that, I, I think of what would really be the benefits of, uh, of certain apartments. And I think I see this project as being, it's a nice building. It's going to be an attractive addition. We've got some things to work out, but I think, I think it's a great location. And I'm also looking at the, is, is the board or, you, we're in this, it takes a village and I'm thinking the, uh, rental units, be it market rate or affordable rate, uh, the difference between a one bath and a bath and a half, especially we have most people that are working from home. I just see it as a benefit. I think long term, maybe the more we can, we're in this together as far as rental units, I would, um, I would like to have seen at least a half bath. And you have a one bath unit, one bedroom, you have one bath. Uh, two bedrooms, you have, you know, maybe a bath and a half or three, three bedrooms. You don't really have to make a change, but I would like to have seen, um, the inclusion of a, um, half bath and units. I, I'm pretty sure I mentioned that because it's, you know, it's, uh, I've been there and I just thought would be, again, it makes the, uh, units more attractive with people that they're even with a couple of kids. Believe me, you know, I've heard from tenants, I mean, another bathroom makes a big difference and it'd be nice to have stability on people that are, uh, living in those units. And if anyone's been a landlord, they know some of those little, you know, nuances. I mean, they make a big difference in the, um, the rental. So maybe it's too late at this point, but I was pretty sure I brought it up and, you know, I don't know whether maybe it's a board, but like I said, affordable houses, we're all on this together, you know, with my rental overall. So if there's anything we do to maybe just making sure that we're, you know, trying to see, make sure that some of those happens. I don't know how we do that. Can we set a precedent or maybe, I don't know. But anyway, that's my opinion on the half bath, but I thought, and I'm pretty sure we brought it up. But anyway, I'm not sure who can answer that at this point.
Yes. Roger, this is Catherine. I think I'd like to address, uh, some points that you brought up. Um, I mean, first of all, the planning board review is not so much concerned with the interior space. In fact, we're not at all concerned with the interior space, except insofar as it creates requirements for the site plan, such as parking requirements. Um, the interior space design was, was provided as information and for, as a courtesy to us and so that we can understand the project, but it actually is not within our purview to, to change things. Basically, we just need to understand what's happening, uh, vis a vis how, according to the bylaws, it creates requirements on the site plan, such as parking requirements. Secondly, if I could address your second point, and I want to address this to the board and to the public, um, we have been shown that these are apartments incidental to commercial use. We're shown that they're apartments. We have not been given information as to ownership, whether these are rentals or whether these will be condominiums. They can be either, and the planning board really has no authority over whether or not they will be rentals or whether or not they will be condominiums. And also we don't really have any knowledge of, and I think you mentioned this, whether or not these will be offered at attainable, uh, rates or whether they will be offered at market rates or whether they will be sold as high-end condominiums. That is up to the developer and the property owner. And again, uh, it's not pertinent to the planning board's considerations. Our, our review is of the site plan and we don't really have authority. Certainly, as the board, the planning board in our long range, when we're wearing our long range planning, uh, function, when we're putting on that function, we do very much want to fulfill the town's needs for additional housing and for additional moderately priced housing and for additional rentals. However, in our regulatory capacity, in site plan review, we actually don't have the, the authority to request that or require it. So I hope that's clear to the board and to the applicant and, and to the public. Um, although I do appreciate your, what's the word, your good wishes, um, for again, wanting to create housing.
Right. But it's more than good wishes because we have a, we have a housing, a rental housing problem and maybe we should really, you know. Yeah, exactly. And it, you know, and the, the, the more suitable the housing is for people renting, you know, I guess I'm, you know, hey, I've been a landlord, I know. I, I don't know. Anyway, yeah, you're right. So it gives me some plausible reasons.
It's just that we don't know what the rental rate will be and we actually don't have any authority to set the rental rate or the sale price for the condominiums that the applicant is showing us.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please go ahead.
I, I appreciate very much, um, your input, uh, and all that you just said. Um, I would like to tag on to the question or the comment that was raised, however. And I, because it, it, it does point to, this is a very, um, a very challenging site. Um, we are actually reducing, um, the non-conformity of buildings that are extending over setbacks and things. We're not pushing any further than, than already. And, and it is limited. We're pro, we're hoping to provide three new housing units to the town, which will be very good. And we've done our best to make them comfortable, um, and usable. And there's a balancing act between that and parking and access and refuge containment and all of those things.
Right.
And green space. And, 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 and I just think it's a great opportunity for, for everyone to recognize that, um, there's a bit of all of that. Um, and, and it's not huge. It's not a huge space. It's not a ton of housing. It's not a ton of any of it. And it seems to be adequate for what is there, um, and with the intention of giving fifty percent apartment, the maximum apartment housing we can get. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Um, so I'm going to ask once more if Bob Wurchefter has joined us. And if not, um, I have a few comments. I, I think the board has pretty thoroughly covered all the issues from my perspective. Uh, based on this site plan and change of use, uh, compared to what you've submitted pre- previously, I would say you've made some improvements. There are still issues. It's still a very tight space, but I think overall, uh, the change of use is less onerous. Uh, the, the, it's less intense and because, and also I think the circulation, although there, it is still, uh, some issues, I think that has identified that the easement is in place. Uh, I think it is improved over what you submitted last time in terms of pedestrian and vehicular circulation. Um, parking, yes, it's tight, but I think strictly speaking, according to the square footage for the office space and the residential requirements, strictly speaking, we don't actually even need to consider waiving parking requirements. You have met them. Um, and yes, I do agree with, um, my colleagues on the board that the building design aesthetically will be a great improvement to the area. So those are the comments that I have. So before we go to a board vote on this, um, I'm just going to ask if there's any members of the public connected to the call or connected by teams who would like to make any comments on this project or would like to address any questions um, to Leslie Schneberger or Ted Eldridge or Ben Zender. Anyone from the public with any comments or questions?
Uh, my hand is up. Madam Chair, Elaine Gibbs.
Hello, Elaine. Please go ahead. I actually, I'm, do apologize. I could not see your hand up, but please go ahead.
That's okay. I do have a number of comments.
Sure.
Questions first is, um, in the staff checklist, it refers to this as multifamily housing and, uh, normally that requires recreational and open space and it says not applicable. So I'm wondering, uh, you know, are, were there calculations? Is it meeting the open space recreational requirement? If these are going to be family dwelling units? That's number one. Um, I would disagree.
It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a question. I, you can answer now. Someone can answer now if that's.
I think the board, this is Cath. Yes. Is that Ben?
It is. Um, this is
Please go ahead.
Yeah, and, and it's a good question. Uh, but technically this is not a multifamily dwelling use. This is apartments incidental to a commercial use, which is a different use classification under the zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, so that's different than a couple of years ago because you did have to have open space when you had the prior plans, but that's
The prior plan. Elaine, this is Catherine. The prior plans very specifically had a different use definition under the bylaw.
All right. Uh, I, I would beg to differ as to whether or not it, um, is important for the planning board to know whether or not these are going to be rental apartments versus sold as condominiums as it directly relates to the amount of parking. If these are going to be sold as condominiums, this is not going to be workforce housing. They will probably be sold to people who are summer residents and they will be around all the time. So I think you have to know that, uh, what it's going to be. I understand the whole thing of form of ownership and, and et cetera. But it does make a difference if this is going to be rental properties, which I assumed, um, that's what these were supposed to be. And I think it's a little squishy as to what the answer was that we got. Um, I also would debate the calculations. I agree with all the board members in terms of the number of parking spaces for commercial use. Again, this is supposed to be commercial with incidental residential. And I don't know how you can say that the two first floors of both buildings are commercial. And yet you're only saying four hundred and eighty-two are used for the calculation. And then I, I really had a problem with prior discussion about, well, uh, people may not be staying, they're going to be leaving if they're in, live in the apartments, but they're not going to be coming to work because of the current envi- environment that they're working remotely. You can't really have it both ways. I don't think you build complexes based on the current conditions of people zooming and working from home. Uh, and the, the other thing is that one way in and out, um, that is substantially, as people said, I don't know how, when you have delivery trucks coming in. that is substantially, as people said, I don't know how, when you have delivery trucks coming in and people want to exit their spots, and you have UPS trucks and all kinds of trucks, ambulances, emergency vehicles, I they would have to back out. I don't there. I don't think there's enough turning radius without doing three or four-point turns. And I guess my final comment was to suggest that the reasoning for the parking, if there's not enough, is that people can use the community center, the post office, and other various public parking. We have a problem with public parking in Chatham. And I can't get a parking space at the post office to go in and mail a package, whether or not it's owned by the post office or not, because people are using it. And to actually design a complex and tell the people that they can park at the post office, or they can park across the street, or they can park at the community center, when that is a serious problem in in Chatham, I think that does that does fall within your purview. So I I think it is totally inadequate in terms of parking. I think the egress in and out with one road. And I also don't think you should be relying on an easement that belongs to neighbors you haven't even talked about as to whether or not it can actually be used and or paved. You know, I think there are a lot of unanswered questions on this. And I don't know if there had been talk by the planning board before that you you shouldn't only be, people suggested that maybe we shouldn't only be looking at the footprint, but at the total increase in the size of the structures. This building in the back is going to be a substantial increase in square footage. It's very big. And I know that you don't deal with neighborhood compatibility, I guess, but this this structure is going to be significantly larger in terms of square footage because the other one are too small buildings with a very narrow connector, and this is going to be one large building. So those are my comments, but I don't think we should be approving any plan where the design says you can go and use public parking in Chatham. That's that's not appropriate. There has to be enough on-site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other members of the public who would like to make comments or who have questions?
I have my hand up.
Gloria, yes, please go ahead, Gloria.
Thank you, Chair Halpern. I followed this application for a few years, and I oppose it on several levels. It sets a bad precedence on several levels, including demolishing four two-bedroom rental apartments for high-end condominium. I I hear the representatives of the applicant referring to it as rentals. Are they rentals or are games being played that that information is not being disclosed for one reason or another? Mostly, I object because this is a business district. Each zone, residential, business, and industrial has requirements to regulate lot size, siting, and bulk or density. And I I wonder if the planning board shouldn't consider a zoning bylaw amendment to assure that residential development in the town's business districts must adhere to dimensional requirements of residential districts. Someone brought up recreational space. Okay, and I think you said that that was not needed. But there are so many condominiums replacing commercial uses. It just seems they need their own set of rules when in a business district, which I believe would be possible in Chatham. And and that that business zone requirements should not be used for residential use. I listened to your discussion of parking. I too wondered if there really is adequate parking for employees. I don't know who's going to be using that space, but I think it's real important to get in to be sure that we're not using the post office space or the community center space. Parking is a real problem. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Anyone else from the public who has questions or comments regarding this property? I don't see anyone. I don't see any hands. So I think.
Madam Chair, Warren Warren has his hand up.
Warren, thank you so much. Sometimes it's a little hard for me to see. So Warren, please go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. I just found one note that I had posted that I had missed before. Certainly, in light of all of the comments about the way people are working at home and the lack of parking space and so on, it occurred to me as I had looked at this that the landscape plan could easily include a couple of bicycle racks. People that are living there are like very likely to have bicycles, whether it's rentals, whether it's living there, or whatever. And again, to the extent that their parking is a challenge, that may well, in fact, suggest to people that they bike to work or bike to the offices. And there doesn't seem to be any place on here that is even convenient, far less encouraged, to leave a bicycle. So I would suggest to the applicants that they consider perhaps having one one out by the street somewhere, one back toward the the residences. But again, that's not a major point, but it does seem to me it's something that would be used and would marginally affect the the parking situation if it didn't require the use of a parking space to put in a bike rack. But that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Warren. So I'll suggest, because the board will now have to consider a vote and conditions that we would apply to this. We can vote to approve this site plan with conditions. We can add some conditions to the standard conditions that have been put forth by staff in the staff report. I would suggest that if you agree, Warren, we could add, you know, the addition of a bike rack or bike racks in the site plan. And do you feel the lighting issues were sufficiently addressed? Do you want to specifically request addition of some lighting on the east side? I think that was your concern, Warren.
Yes, it's difficult for me to tell exactly what the impact of the lights that are proposed would be. But it does seem to me it's certainly along that sidewalk on the east side of the building and perhaps on the west side of the proposed building that, you know, the low landscape lighting that you see along walkways, say down by Chatham Bar's Inn, that kind of thing. At at least something like that. Otherwise, it could be extraordinarily dark back there would make sense. Also, it was never brought up before, but if there's been any discussion by the applicant with the the neighbor to the to the west as to whether there could be, I don't know, some use of that space next door for parking. I don't know to what extent the arguments that have been put forward about who is likely to be parking next door based on the business that's there and or the, I forget if there's an apartment up stop too, but there is actually a good bit of space behind that building. And to the extent it might be possible to work out something would, in fact, certainly make me feel a lot better about the parking calculations here. Thank you.
Okay, so you're talking about the space behind Sweet Tomatoes. The parking area behind Sweet Tomatoes, which is who's the neighbor to the west. Okay. Okay. All right. So you know what I, Leslie, I just wonder if you could. Is it, who is doing the screen sharing? Is that Katie or is that?
That's Christina.
Christina. So since parking seems to be an issue, so I'm just wondering, Leslie, can you show us how you've calculated the 482 square feet for the office space and the 338 square feet for the office space to get the total of 830 square feet? Can you just show or can you?
Sure. Well, I can't show. I don't have control, but when you look at the floor plans, it's the public use space within the building. So it's the entry, the lobby, the conference room. It's the the public areas of the building.
So the big building in the back, I'm looking at that. And in the front. So it would not include like the kitchen area or the lavatories. Would it include the sample room or the print room?
No, those are definitely not public spaces.
So it it would just be the conference room. Would it include the private offices per se? I think it does have to include those, to be honest. Because we're calculating on office, office use. So I think it does need to, the square footage calculations would need to include those, even if they're not offices that are accessed by the public.
Okay, it includes the shared workspace. It does not include the private offices.
Okay. So let me see. I don't have the floor plan for the building in front. I'm just looking at your floor plans for 784. So you've just, so you've included the entryway, the conference room. You have excluded all of those private offices. You have you included the sample room or the print room?
No, as I said, sample room is a storage type room and print room is equipment.
Okay. All right. All right. So and can you go through that in the the building 782 in the front? Can you also just share with the board what you've included and what you've excluded?
I think you're almost there. Sorry, I I think it's up at the top of the drawings, but I can find it from my own and follow through.
All right. Great. And I think.
It is the same, and I'm sorry they don't have this notes set. It is the same. It's the the public areas when you come in. It's the conference space. It's the shared space of the building where visitors, just as in, here we go, I found the plan, it's up at the very top of the drawing set. Yeah, existing floor plan, no alts. I think it's the very first drawing, actually.
All right.
So in this area, there's the entry and then the open office space off of there, which is, I guess, similar to a retail use where more people are coming in. So we use that as the square footage area, not the private offices.
All right. Thank you. So Katie, if I could ask for your help here, I would understand, and I don't have my bylaws in front of me, so I just may need to ask for your help. But I understand when we do the parking calculations for office use, we, except for storage and hallways and lavatories, we basically include all the the square footage. Is that an, is that a correct understanding of the bylaw?
Madam Chair, for professional office, the calculation is, as the the applicant had stated, one space for every 150 square feet of floor area devoted to customer use in any bank, business office, or professional office.
So it does have to be what's publicly accessed.
That's, yes, that's the way it's, that's the way it's interpreted. Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you for clarifying that. And then I do need to to say this again. That being the case, the parking calculations that are provided now by the applicant, I would understand that they're meeting the required parking, required number of parking spaces. They do not even need to request a waiver. So all of our discussion about using public spaces nearby and so on, while helpful, is in a sense unnecessary because, according to the bylaw, and Katie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I am seeing that the the calculations that the applicant is providing are correct, and they're providing 14 spaces, which is what is required. I do see Art's hand is raised. Please go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I I I think we have to clarify this a little bit because.
All right.
Let's let's take as an example that there's no public spaces here. This is just offices. There's 10 offices there, nine or 10, okay? Then according to what you state, it's a, it would mean that there is no requirement for parking for the offices, professional offices that would be there. And the only thing that would be required would be for the residential. That doesn't make sense at all. There's another part of the 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 site plan review section, and it says the planning board may require that more than the minimum number of parking spaces be provided if the nature of the proposed use warrants such provision. That's what I'm looking at in this case. It's not just the public space for the public. It also means that there's employees there. They're excluding all the employees. So I don't agree that all you have to do is look at public space, and you can ignore the nine offices that are there. There could be an individual in every single one of those offices because you're asking for that space to be built and to be used. Therefore, I think we have to account for some sort of parking associated with those nine offices. It's not just the public space alone. That's my, that's my concern associated with this site. And so I don't know how we can go ahead with that without resolving that related issue. And if we can't resolve that related issue, that means that they'll come back with a problem afterwards after full build-out, full use of everything, and there's insufficient parking. Where do they go? I agree with the other board's members' comments saying that going to other sites, the post office square and that and community center, that's not a viable option here during the day. That's what we're talking about. So I I'm I'm using my judgment and that provision in the bylaw regulations there that says that we should use our judgment in here. In this case, you can't, you can't ignore those offices, in my opinion. If you've got rid of those offices, hey, that's a world of difference, but that's not what they're proposing. They're proposing nine offices here in addition to the the residential units that require eight. I I something is not jiving in here. So if somebody can resolve that issue, then I I I think we can move ahead. But I don't see how that's resolved just by saying that, well, we comply with some. No, in this case, we're using judgment to say it doesn't, it's not, it's insufficient for the amount of parking that that's that's my point of view.
All right. And I see Katie's hand is raised.
Oh, thank you, Madam Kate. I was just going to reiterate what Art just said about the, you know, that the planning board can require the greater number of spaces. I wanted to make sure that that was reiterated as well.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, we do have that discretionary authority. So thank you, Arthur, for clarifying your view on that. And also, I see Matthew's hand is raised. Did you want to make a comment?
Sure, I would. So the the focus seems to be zeroing in on parking. And, you know, we we've owned the property for going on 10 years since we've been a tenant there.
We're not hearing you, Matthew. Matthew, I'm sorry. You were cutting out. I, we didn't hear what you said. At least I didn't.
Can you hear me better now?
That's better.
Okay, there seems to be a lag. I apologize. I'm going to speak with my video off. Can you still hear me?
Yes, but there is a a big time lag, so keep speaking, please.
Sure. So we've either been a tenant at or owned the property for going on 10 years now, since 2012, 2013 timeframe, if I remember. The the parking has worked well, and certainly we're we're looking to expand expand the use. We've experienced both at this property and others, having a mix of residential and commercial works well. Tenants do leave during the day. And, you know, when commercial occupants come in, our offices are never full. This is space to grow into. Our, the nature of our work is that it takes us to job sites, to showrooms and to other locations. So I I'm very comfortable with the agreement. We plan to hold the property indefinitely. So so we we really have studied this hard, looked at it extensively for years now, and are very comfortable with what we have for the number of spaces at 14 and believe that we do comply with bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Any other comments from board members about this issue? So I think, um. Arthur, I'm just gonna ask you, I don't, I don't see uh, a solution in hand. Uh, you are right, in, you know, we do have a discretionary authority to ask for more spaces than is required. A lot of what the information we have is, you know, it's based on anticipated use, Matthew is saying that he does not anticipate that every office will be occupied at every moment of the day. Um, we're supposing that in general it's possible that residents will be gone during the day and that the offices will be not, not be occupied at night, but these are all kind of suppositions.
Yeah.
They're not hard facts. Um. Uh, so.
Well, Catherine, this, the, the thing that I see here from the current use that was referred to by Matthew versus what is, what is, uh, being proposed here is that there was no additional office space in the rear building, that was just strictly apartments, so there is an expansion here of
Right.
use, and that is creating the need for the additional parking. So you can't just assume that you can cover this with, what was worked before, because when you add another five more office spaces and employees to the rear building, it does change the dynamic of this site. Um, I, I, I just, I just think that there needs to be an acknowledgement and recognition that this is not the same as the other site. It's not the same as the existing site, this is new. And the assessment needs to be based on what I see in front of me, I don't, I don't see how this uh, is, logistically makes sense from the standpoint of all the residential in addition to all the office space, I think something has got to give on the site. And I don't think they can shoehorn any more parking in, that's, that's, that's the challenge. I think they've done a, a marvelous job associated with that. So that, I, I, I'm, I don't, I don't have a solution to that, all I say is, is my observation says that this doesn't, that this is inconsistent to what was there before, and just maintaining that as, it'll work. I, I, I'm not, I'm not there yet, I, I don't buy that, I don't have adequate information to tell them that that's the case, not, not when you have nine offices that you're proposing.
Okay, and I see Tom Gagin has hand raised, Tom, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, to Arthur's point, uh, about the board and its position relative to any project is we don't know any more than the present owner knows what will happen to this property in the future. Uh, it's very nice that for the last ten years with the current owner that things have worked out, and there has not been a problem, but I don't think we can base our decision on what is present or has been, but what the future brings, and I think that's where we have to settle on the argument or the issue about parking and, uh, and what's adequate for the site. Uh, we can't, we can't predict the future, uh, they could sell this building right after they put it up, I mean, we can't talk to them about that. So I would just, uh, be cautious that what we would agree to uh, in submitting this, uh, site plan, uh, looks not only to the present day use, but certainly the future.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Um. Any other comments, I see Matthew, your hand is still raised, or is it raised from before?
No, I raise it again, Madam Chairman, I just, uh, you know, I, I just want to agree with Art that I, I, I think the formulas aren't perfect.
You're
It's
Matthew.
Formula. I want to agree with Art that the formulas aren't perfect. Perhaps the commercial formula is understating the need, I think the residential requirement is overstating the need. We've never seen in, in the ten years we've been there, two vehicles per apartment, so I think as Thad explained it ear- earlier, the fourteen will, will be sufficient for the need when you consider both of those, all we can do is go by the, the formula in the current bylaw, which is what we've done.
Okay, thank you. Gloria, I see your hand raised, is it raised from before, or did you have a comment? And Matthew, your hand is up again, did you want to add something?
No.
Okay, great, so I do think we need to consider a board vote. We can, as I mentioned before, and as is outlined in your staff report, we could vote to approve this, uh, formal site plan with conditions. We could also vote to continue it, uh, if you feel that, to continue the matter. And again, I would suggest continuing it to the July twenty-fifth meeting, because at this point it looks like we will need to cancel our July eleventh meeting. If the board wants further information to analyze the parking requirements, the only solution that I can suggest at this time is that w- we may need to make the office usage less uh, dense, you might have to have fewer offices, uh, because although by square footage you do meet the requirements, Arthur is correct, we have some discretionary authority about, you know, trying to determine what the level of usage is in the office space. So that, that the board could consider continuing the matter to get more information to reevaluate the parking requirements. So that's suggestions, I'm just suggesting that, I see Tom's hand is up again. Did, is it up from before, or did you have a comment, Tom?
Madam Chair, I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Um. So. Maybe before we vote, um. Can I just get a sense of the board, do you feel you have enough information to make a decision to approve this formal site plan tonight with conditions? Or do you feel we need further information? Particularly, it seems to be the issue to evaluate the parking requirements. Arthur?
Well, uh, two things, one, I would like the applicant to go back and revisit this from, from the standpoint. Let him. He's got some bright people here, he's got some good engineers and architects, let him look at it and come back and see if they can assess and come up with uh, another, another level of, of, of assessment, right? The second thing is, is from a circulation standpoint, I mentioned that there is a neck down of thirteen feet to the rear parking lot, that has to be resolved to make it twenty feet, it's two-way traffic now at this point. There's a utility pole there, they may require that utility pole to be moved, it happens to be on the other adjacent property. I think that needs to be resolved by the, by the applicant too with the, by the owner. So if, if they do those two things and they do a concerted effort, and the rest of the board members think that we can still make this work, then um, okay, I, I, I'm not going to, you know, prevent this from moving forward, but I would like to see them rethink a few things and come back with, with some, uh, offerings of what would, uh, sort of mitigate some of the things that some of the board members have said.
Okay. Good. Um. Warren?
Yes, this is Warren. Um. A couple of times it's been mentioned that the easement area has not, uh, been the subject of discussion with the, um, with the neighbor, the butter, at all, and it seems that um, I'd like to see that discussion take place, because that's going to have to be totally torn up and repaved as part of this project, or the circulation flow is just going to be, um, I think unacceptable. Um, and there's been no attempt to even do that. There's also, um, in response to, uh, I guess my inquiry, there's been no discussion whatsoever with, um, the butter with respect to perhaps sharing parking space in the rear of their building, um, under whatever arrangement might be, uh, proposed. Um, given that those things haven't taken place, and given that parking is such an issue, I'd be hesitant to, um, to go ahead and approve this plan, um, even though I like the, the buildings very much. Um, yeah, to have a parking calculation which totally excludes that there will be any employees in nine offices, uh, because that's what the, uh, the bylaws provide, seems to be, um, suspect in my view, and to the extent that there is flexibility here, uh, it seems to me that should be evaluated, especially since no one has talked to the neighbors about, uh, uh, potentially sharing parking and um, again, there've been no alternatives, uh, that have been proposed by the applicant which might in fact, uh, increase the parking areas there. I do believe that, uh, it, to the extent these are going to be rental units or not, as the case may be, um, if they're sold, I would say they're going to be dedicated to parking spaces, so there's, you know, there's eight parking spaces that are never going to be available for either employees or, uh, customers for the offices. So that's only six spaces, uh, for all of that, and it just doesn't seem that it, that it's gonna work. But given that we haven't talked to the butters, given that, um, uh, we haven't talked, uh, there've been no other alternative parking plans suggested, I'd be reluctant to go ahead and, and approve the, uh, the, the plan, although I'm not sure that I'm prepared to say no either.
Yes, um. I don't think, I think continuing the, is what our option is, not non-approval at this point, but continuing, um, to request revision or more information.
My glad you, that rather than me, so, so that's fine.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, Tom Gagin? Just your opinion to get a sense of the board, because
Tom Gagin, Madam Chair.
After this, yeah.
I, I agree that the amount of work that's been done on the site from the last application to this is, um, been, been very well thought out uh, with the building, building access. And I think because of that, that this board should warrant and should approve an extension and try to encourage the applicant for an extension, I think that would be in the best favor for this board to, uh, make a more definitive conclusion to support this project, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Okay, uh, Bob Dubus? Just your opinion, are you in favor of continuing this project to request more information?
I'm gonna go along with the board, but I, I, um. The building, uh, as presented is, is quite a, uh, a, a nice looking building, it's, it's, uh, quite an improvement from the last time we were, went through this. But, uh. They, they are by somewhat the letter of the law around the parking, there are sixteen places, not fourteen. Uh, and if they, you know, I'm gonna throw this out here, but it, but if they feel that that's gonna be able to work for them, then do we know better than they do? Sometimes yes, sometimes no, but, a- and we might be right and they might be wrong, they might be right, we might be wrong, but they're willing to go through this, put all this money into this thing, and, and, uh, come up, if they don't have the parking, then they're gonna have to find other, other means to park, and in the middle of the winter, they might have to carpool from, from the lot, which is, which is what a lot of people do anyway. My biggest concern is the neighbor, to get together with the neighbor and at least get a letter stating that he understands uh, what's gonna happen and that the traffic's gonna go there as it does now. And if, if anything gets maimed or destroyed in the building process, then it will be taken care of. Uh, but they, they're smart architects, and, and I'm not an architect, I'm only a dirt man, and I can see what they've done. Uh, and, and so who are we really to say it's insufficient? Uh, and, and if there's not enough parking, then they'll have to work it out.
Okay. That, is that it, Bob Dubus? Then I'll ask, I don't Thank you, Bob Dubus. Um, and I don't see that Bob Wurchafter has joined us yet, so, uh, I'll ask Roger. Uh, yours, I just want to get a sense of everyone so we can formulate the vote. Uh, do you feel that, yeah?
I think we should be looking at a continuance at this point, I, I, you know, I don't feel ready to approve it tonight, but you know, again, I think we should need to check some things, and I guess, one of the things that concerns me is that turns out, uh, the, you know, the units are sold, and they know those parking spaces are no longer available other than for the owners, or could be, I guess there's, there were just some things I think we have to really check out and get more information on.
Okay. All right, this is Catherine. Um. I have to say, I think the I agree with Mr. Dubus, I do want to compliment you, I think you've made some great improvements in this design over what we've previously seen. I also think the, as I mentioned, the building will be a, a great improvement over what's there now aesthetically. Uh, the board does want more information about specifically about the parking. Um, also, maybe an agreement or a letter from the butters with the understanding uh, about using the easement and additional use of the easement and use of the easement um, uh, for the, uh, ingress and egress during construction. Uh, also the concern about the, the, that area to the west being narrowed to just thirteen feet when we need twenty feet, if you can somehow address that. So I think the butters and the easement, um, the narrowing of that westerly ingress and egress to thirteen feet, if you can correct that somehow or deal with that somehow. And then, what can you do to document? Either to document that your pa- parking calculations according to your anticipated use of the offices, just clearly document for the board that that will be sufficient, or if it's insufficient, you know, if there's greater use of the offices, just document for the board what those uses will be, uh, and how they will be used, how those offices will be used, um, so that the board has clear information in order to assess the parking and whether or not the parking is adequate. Um, because there is that possibility that it's not adequate, depending on exactly how that office space will be used. So it does seem that we'll take a formal vote, but I just wanted to summarize, I think the board, um, majority of the board is leaning in the direction of a continuance. Um, I do, I would like to ask you if we could continue it to the July twenty-fifth meeting of the planning board. Uh, at this point, we, um, we don't have a July eleventh meeting scheduled. Uh, if that's absolutely not possible, um, we could make some arrangements, I do see Mr. Zender's hand is up. Did you want to make a comment, Ben?
No, Madam Chair, I just was gonna ask the board to please take a vote, I have to be on other hearings in other towns and they're waiting, um. It, I, I am conflicted on the twenty-fifth, but I, I want to move this along so the board could meet before the twenty-fifth, that would be wonderful, but if not, then we'll take the twenty-fifth as, as the next hearing date, please.
All right, um, I'm gonna check with Katie Donovan, um, because we, we have an issue with the ele- July eleventh meeting, so I think uh, Ben, are you sure you can somehow manage the twenty-fifth, if we can continue to that date?
I'll have to, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, um, and also I would, I would ask if the, if the chair would consider closing the matter for public hearing at this point as well.
Yes, we're not in a public hearing, this is just a formal site plan review, but the board can uh, I would propose, I want to suggest to the board that we make a motion to continue this matter to the July, uh, twenty-fifth meeting, uh, with the request for additional information from the applicant. And Katie, I do see your hand is raised, yes?
Sure, Madam Chair, just for clarification purposes, the, um, the board does have a scheduled meeting for July eleventh, however, staff, uh, staff availability is an issue, and so that was the concern, was that staff would not be available. If the board wanted to meet on the eleventh, um, they can
That's acceptable.
Certainly do so, however, waiting for revised plans or getting revised plans and reviewed and out, uh, an updated staff memo to the board before the July eleventh meeting would also be a concern.
Yes. So I think, if I could, this is Catherine, if, as long as it's acceptable to the applicant because of the reasons that Katie has mentioned, I suggest that we would continue this matter to the July twenty-fifth meeting, um, to ensure proper processing, uh, by our staff.
Uh, this is Art Sproul, I will make that motion.
Uh, this is Art Spru. I'll make that motion.
Catherine.
Thank you. Can I have a second to that motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approved.
Uh, Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approved.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approved.
Tom Gagin? Tom Gagin, how do you vote? I think you might be muted. You're muted, Tom.
Uh, yes, uh, I approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approved.
And this is Catherine Hopp, and I also approve we'll continue this matter till our July twenty fifth meeting. Uh, the board is requesting additional information. We will send you a letter to summarize the board's requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm not sure, you're, Madam Chair, you're muted. I'm not sure if you're speaking.
Yes, sorry, I was muted and I was speaking. So uh, so we have continued the matter of um. Seven eighty-two, seven eighty-four Main Street to our July twenty fifth meeting. We've requested additional app uh, information from the applicant. That information will be sent in a letter to summarize. Uh, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Which is also a formal site plan approval for twenty-nine Meeting House Road. Uh, this is twenty-three eighty Main Street. This is for the town of Chatham. Dr. Dunkinson will be presenting. This is for proposed construction of municipal wastewater pump station and the pertinences. So, Dr. Dunkinson, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Robert Dunkinson, Director of Health and Natural Resources, representing the town of Chatham. Uh, this is part of our continuation of the comprehensive wastewater management plan that was approved back in two thousand and nine. Uh, this is a pump station that will be relocated at the intersection of Meeting House Road and Route twenty-eight. Uh, this was a parcel that was bought by the town of Chatham a number of years ago. From uh, basically the old Cape and Vineyard Electric Company. Uh, for use as a potential fire station. It was actually acquired back in two thousand and seven. Um, as you know, the South Chatham Fire Station is just down the road and it's basically just a one car, uh, one, one vehicle building. Although it's currently too small to house any of the modern apparatus, so uh, there was thought that potentially this could be the location of a new South Chatham Fire Station. So this wastewater pump station will serve the lower section of Meeting House Road as well as a portion. Of Morton Road and various side streets, Commerce Park. And uh, other side streets that are located off Meeting House and Morton Road. Uh, that wastewater will all flow by gravity to this pump station. And then from here, it will be pumped through a sewer force main. Which will be located under the bike path um, to the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, we have sighted the pump station in the basically the northwest corner. Of the property, which is the lowest area on the site. Um, and we've tried to maintain as much of the rest of the site in an open area. Um, in case at some point in the future the town does decide to use it uh, for a fire substation. So we have an access road that is coming off Meeting House Road. It then curves around and then would exit out to Route twenty-eight. Um, which would allow a fire substation to be built, which would be of a drive-through variety, if you will. Uh, the pump station will be housed in a building, very similar to the ones that we have at other locations. Around town, um, probably the most one you're most familiar with from driving by it on a regular basis is at Lime Hill. Uh, right next to the Agway shopping, uh, the Agway uh, agricultural center. Uh, the building is roughly eighteen by eighteen. Uh, it will be cedar shingles, white trim. Basically look like a Cape Cod one-car garage. Um, due to the topography, which is rises up dramatically. Um, on the north side of the parcel to the podiatrist's office and then the bike path. And then also on the west side where it rises up fairly steeply, there will be a retaining wall. Um, to basically hold those slopes back. The retaining walls will not be visible. From uh, the butters property because basically this is down in a hole, um, if you will. Um, and then once the station is uh, installed, uh, the site will be landscaped. Um, they did clear the site last week um, in preparation for working at this location over the summer. Uh, because it would involve work off the main road, so we would allow that work to take place. Um, so most of the equipment would be inside the building. There will be an air conditioning unit. And an emergency generator that will be outside. And then there will be significant stormwater drainage installed because as I said, this is down. In the low point, um, and we want to make sure that any runoff from the new roadway. Or the small parking area uh, is contained on the site. Because obviously, given the topography, it wouldn't flow off the site, uh, but we also don't want it to cause any flooding in the pump station itself. Uh, and so with that quick introduction, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, so Art, why don't you start? Do you have questions? Uh, comments that you'd like to ask Bob Dunkinson?
Um, well, I I think uh, just a couple of uh, comments and then uh, I have some questions. Um, I, you know, I I like to see some details. I'm sure you have them, you reference them all over the place. You talk about details for a swell and then check dams and everything. Um, uh, it would be appropriate for you to be sending, since it's all site-related, to send us those details. So I'd appreciate it if you could go down through the whole list of anything that you're proposing here. That is site-related, guardrails, fences, swales, check dam, you know, uh, reta- the retaining wall. Provide us some details associated with that. I'm sure it's something that you already have, so it's just smashing of uh, documents and paperwork.
Yeah, we we could certainly submit the full plan set, absolutely.
Thank you. And then uh, you did mention that there's uh, uh, significant stormwater management that that makes a lot of sense in here, I agree. Again, just submit the calculations. I'm I'm assuming that there's not going to be any issues associated with them. You got a very credible firm who does this type of work all the time. Um, and also the the pavement cross-section. I'm assuming it's boom, the tumidest. I couldn't find any place that said that that's what it was, but I assume it was, so.
Yes, it it will be because of the um, the grade coming down from Meeting House Road. We have to, we have to pave it.
Yeah, so then just a, just a couple of questions then. Um. The retaining wall is referring to a drain in the back and I and it and it just, I wasn't quite sure how that. Oh, drain system is functioning. Is that, does that go to any place in particular? I didn't see it. I went for it. Um, and and I'm, and again, I'm assuming it's just to pick up any kind of water pressure from the rear of. The retaining wall, but you know, where where does it go? That that's all I'm looking for on that question.
Yeah, if you look at the um, the site plan that we provided and and this is was kind of a a less busy site plan, if you will. Uh, there is a, there is one catch basin and a drain in the very lower. Um, lower left-hand corner that will be actually be up in the parking lot. Of the podiatrist's office, because right now that runoff basically runs over the bank. Um, from the podiatrist's office parking lot um, onto the town property and it it basically drains just about into the. The same location where the pump station's going. So what we did was we're putting in a new catch basin there. Uh, which will have one leach pit associated with it and then it will be piped down. If you see that group of basically. Um, eight circles.
Yeah.
The lower level, those are all leaching pits.
Yeah.
Um, and so that, any overflow from that drain will be discharged into those leaching pits. Those leaching pits will also pick up runoff coming from the roadway.
Yeah.
Um, coming down. There's also a couple of leach pits on the uh, right-hand side with a catch basin of the pump station. That'll pick up more drainage and then there's also some across the uh, the entrance drive, if you will. Where you come down from the road, you can turn left. And basically there's space there for one car to pull off. Uh, because under D P regulations, as I've talked about before. Um, each pump station has to be visited once a day by a staff, even though they're. Fully alarmed and computerized and basically you get everything on your cell phone now. Uh, D P regulations do require a person to actually visit the site each day. Um, and so we've provided basically that one car pull-off there for a pickup truck. Um, and then on the on the other side of the entrance road, there is a grass well there. Um, just because we didn't have, we really didn't want to do a lot of digging because the utility pole. And also there's some old concrete pads from when it was the ever-source. Um, substation and we didn't want to disturb those and and basically, you know, disturb more of the site. Uh, so we do have a grass well along there and there is a guardrail um, coming down on both sides of the entrance road. Uh, just given its its steep nature coming in. Um, you know, we just want to provide the appropriate protection for the, you know, the pickup truck coming down or or if we need to get a pumper truck down there. Uh, for any reason. So that's, that's what you see in terms of the uh, the darker shaded lines with the posts on either side of the. The driveway basically coming down.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I picked that. Thank you. Thank you, Roger. There's the, the other thing is um. You show it loo- looks going towards south, um, a continuation. I I think you mentioned that that might be for some future stuff. Is there any access that you're proposing to continue down south toward Route twenty-eight at all at this time?
Yeah, right now we're not proposing to carry the road down there, but we will be installing. If you see that S, it's kind of right in the middle of that area.
Yeah.
And then there's two lines coming out heading towards the south, towards Route twenty-eight. Uh, that is a sewer main that we are gonna install now, but it's gonna be capped right at the uh, if you notice, there's a little bat- black cap.
I saw.
We're gonna, we're gonna put that sewer main in now just because we're doing the site work on the site. But that's gonna be capped off and that will be for a future connection from areas further to the west and south of Route twenty-eight. Uh, but we're not, we're not gonna go.
No, no access at this point though, right?
Right, we're not gonna go beyond the uh, Route twenty-eight layout because that would require Mastod permits and all that and. We don't need to at this point, but we are just gonna, so we're not gonna put the road in. At some point, there will likely be a road extending out.
Okay, uh, and then I think I just have two other things. Um, you mentioned Mastod. Is there a Mastod required permit for Meeting House Road?
Um, no, Meeting House Road is actually under the authority of the town, so we do not need a Mastod permit.
Terrific, that 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 would be a lot of issues, I think. Uh, and the last question I have, and I think this is just a clarification. Um, from the adjacent uh, property, it looks like you have a six-inch sewer lead, a six-inch PVC. Is that, is that picking up an existing service or a proposed service? I'm just, just clarification of my own understanding, that's all.
That would be picking, that would be picking up the podiatrist's office and the other building that's on that property. So.
But the current, current flow from that site?
Yes, there, currently it's on a septic system because nobody in this part of town is on sewer. Um, but given the fact that we'll have all the equipment there, we are gonna run that up through the embankment. Onto the uh, podiatrist's property, you know, just because it makes it easier. Um, to do everything while we're there. So that's what that would be for. All right?
Uh, that that's all I had, Catherine.
Okay, good. Thanks, Art. Um, Roger? Do you have any uh, questions for Bob Dunkinson?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And how about Tom Gagin?
Yes, I have one question, uh, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin.
Sure.
Uh, Bob, uh, do you know what the grade is for that entrance road to the pumping station roughly? Just point of information.
Um, I don't have it right with me. It is fairly steep, but it, you know, it's the, it's what we have to work with unfortunately. Um, it's probably about a twenty-foot differential between Meeting House Road and the level of where the pump station is.
So that is gonna require that it be paved?
Yes.
And um. That's, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's why we have a little drainage that we do.
I think you might be.
I'm sorry? Hello?
Bob, I think you might be cutting out.
Um, can you all hear me now?
Just clearly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chair, it actually may be your connection at this point. I think we were hearing Bob and Tom just fine.
Okay, I'm better now. I I've adjusted my connection. Thank you. So Tom, are you, you're set? Are you all set?
Madam Chair, I'm fine. Um, I know that that's a very steep slope there.
Yes.
I'm sure Bob and the town will have any issues in access and uh. Um, from the site, particularly in the winter, under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So Warren Chain, questions for Bob Dunkinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Bob, this is Warren. Um, I don't have any real questions about this given proposal, but I would appreciate your thoughts as to. Um, the capacity of this pumping station with respect to physical layout, size of it. Um, utilities that have to go in there, gas lines for generators, water, electricity, et cetera. As to uh, is this gonna be adequate how far into the future? And can it be expanded when needed?
Um, this pump station is designed for the future. Um, it is designed to be large enough, as I said, right now, it's gonna be. Um, meeting about three-quarters of the length of Meeting House Road as well as areas. Uh, side streets that are off Meeting House Road as well as Commerce Park. And Morton Road as well as the side streets off Morton Road. Um, and then as I mentioned, we do have that new uh, sewer line extension. It would serve the uh, south and west areas. Further to the west and south of Route twenty-eight. So this pump station is designed to handle all that flow into the future. Um, if we ever had to upgrade it further than it's already been designed for. Uh, we would simply upgrade the size of the pumps. We would not have to necessarily build a new building or anything like that. Uh, but it's already got pumps in it that are designed to handle uh, the current as well as projected future flows.
Okay, thank you, Bob. No other comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Warren. Um. And Bob Dubus, I don't think I've asked you.
Bob Dubus here?
Yes.
Bob Dunkinson, I I see sixteen leach pits on this uh, plan. I think you guys have covered it pretty well on that. And I know what you're saying, being in a hole, you want to make sure you you get it all. The uh, I see you have chain-linked fence all around it. I see godrails all around it. And I couldn't think of a better place to put it. Thank you.
Great. All right, this is Catherine. I really don't have any questions. I think we've covered everything. I think as usual. Um, you know, we know it's in the hands of Dr. Dunkinson and everything is well-designed. Uh, I believe that we, I will first ask if there's any comments from the public. Any questions or comments from, for Dr. Dunkinson? And if not, I would encourage the board to move to a vote and I will suggest that we would vote to approve this formal site plan. Um, Arthur, if there's specific, you requested specific information. Are you all right with having that be submitted for the file?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's fine. Um, I, I know all the details are there because they're all referenced and these are not unusual things. But I think it would just be good for our site plan record of what was uh, what was being uh, actually proposed and, you know, the town's gonna have the whole file anyway. But if they can just pull out a few of these detail sheets and submit them, that would just be great for our filing. Thank you.
Perfect. So I will suggest, I will ask for a motion to approve uh, this formal site plan as submitted. With the conditions as stated on the staff report, which are our standard uh, uh, conditions.
Bob Dubus makes that motion.
Excuse me.
Tom Gagin seconds.
Great. Arts proved.
Arts proved approved.
Roger Griffin, excuse me.
Roger Griffin approved.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approved.
Tom Gagin?
Approved, Tom Gagin.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approved.
And this is Catherine. I approve. And this is Catherine, I approve. I'm going to need to take a drink of water, just one moment. Thank you, Bob Dunkinson. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which also will be presented, I understand, by Bob Dunkinson. And this is to Twine Field Drive. And this is the proposed construction of municipal water pump station. So Dunkinson, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And just for the record, Robert Dunkinson, Director Health and Natural Resources, representing the town of Chatham. This is another pump station that is, is part of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. I don't know, Christina, if you can move to the next, the slide for this particular station. This is a wastewater pump station, very similar to the one that you just recently saw replacing the Queen Anne pump station. This one is going to be basically shoehorned into a fairly tight location. So there is no building for this station. It's basically going to be shoehorned into an area between the existing bike path and Twine Field Road. And it's also going to be located on town property. Basically, the town property known as the Twine Field goes all the way out to Morton Road in a smaller area. And we've got the pump station designed so that we can fit the entire station into a very small footprint. So there will be no building, but it will have approximately, there we go. So you can see the lower portion where it says bike path, that is the existing bike path. And then you've got Twine Field Drive up to the north, which is up, Katie's moving her hand back and forth right now and showing it. And so the pump station is basically shoehorned in between the two of those. As I said, there's no building, we have the round circular area, which is the wet well. And then right next to that, we have what I euphemistically call the doghouse, which is a fiberglass structure roughly six by six by seven and a half feet tall that will house the pump units. And then behind that, we will have an emergency generator, as well as a structure, basically a panel, which will hold all the controls, if you will. Very similar to what you saw for the Queen Anne Road site, where basically everything is outside and exposed. That area will be surrounded by a chain link or potentially a privacy type fence, just because we are so close to the bike path. And then out towards Morton Road, that kind of stippled area that you see, that will be pervious pavers and that will be the pull off for that, you know, once a day vehicle that needs to stop by and check the station. Minimal grading or anything here, we do have to take down, we, in fact, I think they already did, one or two trees that were in the area. And we will try to landscape as much as we can, given the fact that, you know, we're really shoehorning this in between the bike path and Twine Field Drive. But again, you know, pump stations have to be situated at the low point, and this is the low point along Morton Road. And then from here, so we will collect wastewater by gravity into this station, and then from here, it will be pumped underneath the bike path to Meeting House Road, where then it will flow into gravity to the station that you just approved. And then from there, it will be pumped over towards the wastewater treatment plant. And you can see the proposed landscaping that we've got, you know, as much as we can to kind of hide it. But keeping in mind that we've really got a very narrow site to work with here. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Bob. So Art, do you want to go ahead? You have some questions for Bob?
That, no, this site, like you said, on Queen Anne Road, it's, it's very similar. There's, I don't see any issues associated, just, just one question for Bob, since I used a bike path a lot. When are you going to rip it up?
We, we were originally proposing to have construction underway this summer, but it was with the zoning board of appeals last Thursday, and they basically granted us the, what we required, the variance and the special permit, but asked us to hold off on any construction until the fall, just because the bike path is so busy. So we will be doing that.
I want to thank you very much, I think the Z B A for that, just so I can use it a little bit longer. That, no, I have no other comments or questions, though.
And we did, we did write it into the, the bid that the contractor had to keep the bike path open and accessible at all times, but just given the fact that, you know, it's a very tight site, holding off until the fall makes sense.
Great. Okay, thank you. Warren, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Bob, the only question I'd have is what thoughts you have given, you gave some thoughts as to screening of the pump station from the bike path. I don't know really what you could do to landscape it to hide it, but, you know, anything that you can do to, to not have a chain link fence staring you in the face, followed by a sewer pump station as you're using the bike path certainly doesn't enhance the, the effect of going through nature on the bike path.
Yeah, I think in this case, we're going to substitute the chain link and we're going to put up a composite privacy fence, which is similar to what we've done at some of the other pump stations around. Yeah, just for those very reasons, because we don't have much room to landscape, unfortunately, on the bike path side, so we'll probably do a composite gray privacy fence.
Perfect, thanks, and that's no other comments, thank you.
Great, yes, that's great, thanks, Bob, and thanks, Warren. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, Madam Chair, no comments, thank you.
Thank you, Bob Dubus?
I, I don't have any comments, but I have a question for Bob, just out of curiosity. How far to the south on Morton Road can you collect?
I believe we're going pretty well down to Route 28. I don't have that, I, I don't have the sewer plan with me right today.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I, I can, I can share with you, Bob, and show you exactly how far down we're going.
No, 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 I just was curious. I'm glad you can get that much.
Yeah, we're actually able to get quite a bit.
Good, good.
Great.
No, I, I think it's a, there's, there's not too many places that, that you're, that you can get that low and collect that much. So that's a, that probably is a fair area to put that. Thank you.
Great. Roger Griffin, any comments or questions for Bob Dunkinson?
No, I have no questions or concerns, thank you.
Great. And this is Catherine, I also, I really have no questions or concerns. Thank you again, Bob Dunkinson. So I will ask if anyone in the public has any comments or questions about this property or this project? And if not, I will again suggest to the board that we have a motion to approve this site plan as submitted with the conditions as outlined on the staff report, which are our three standard conditions that we have with every site plan approval. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Art's approved, make that motion.
Thank you so much.
Bob Dubus second.
All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Art's approved.
Art's approved.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approved.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
And I don't think Bob Wirtschaft has joined us yet, this is Catherine Hopper, and I also approve. So once again, thank you, Dr. Dunkinson, we appreciate all your work and your explanations of these projects.
Thank you, members of the board.
So we do have requests for comment from the zoning board of appeals on these two projects. As Bob Dunkinson mentioned, they have already met with the zoning board of appeals on June 23rd. So, and discussing this with Katie this afternoon, we can just send a note to the zoning board of appeals that, that says that the planning board approved the site plan for both 29 Meeting House Road and for 2 Twine Field Road. And that, that memo can be our response to the request for comment, since zoning board of, of appeals has already given their approval to these projects.
Bob Dubus makes that motion to send the letters.
All right, great. Could I have a second to that motion?
Art's approved, second.
Thank you, we'll do a roll call vote. Art's approved.
Art's approved.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approved.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and basically, this will just be a memo stating that the planning board approved, gave their approval to the site plans for both of these projects. So thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. As we discussed in our last meeting, we just wanted to schedule a brief preliminary session, just an initial discussion for the planning board to consider really our process moving forward. As you recall, in your last planning board packet, we received a letter from the select board regarding the proposed draft zoning bylaw for the zoning overlay district for the RPZ or the runway protection zone. The select board, as you recall, there was a draft proposed by the airport commission that came to us to hold the public hearing, we held the public hearing. The planning board did not give a positive recommendation, we sent it back to the select board. The select board did not put it on the warrant for annual town meeting 2022, but instead sent a memo to the planning board, which basically remands the project to us. And the select board has asked us to work on this draft bylaw and to create a draft proposed bylaw amendment for the runway protection zone that can gain broad support in the community. So that is what we've been mandated by the select board in the recent memo, I believe it was dated in April. And so we just wanted to have a brief discussion tonight about our process moving forward. In discussions earlier today with both Katie Donovan and Art, I think if I could suggest to the board that probably one of the first steps we need to take is to have a meeting to gather more information. Maybe we need to define what our questions are about the draft bylaw that was proposed by the airport commission. What are our questions and what more information do we need? And then we can begin to set up meetings with the people who can give us answers to those questions. So that's a suggestion from my side, but I want to hear from the board how you feel about going forward with this process. So maybe let's start this time with Tom Gagin.
So clever. Tom Gagin, I agree that we don't have enough information to support the overlay zoning bylaw for the RPZ. My concern for myself and the board is that we don't repeat what we went through the first time. So the question for me is, what can we do as board members to ensure that the information that we need to vet this project is given to the board in a timely manner? And I would suggest that if we are going to include a site visit, that we condition that site visit with several conditions that would make sense for the board to gather information in a manner that is fruitful for us. Thank you.
Okay, great. And how about Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus is going to go along with what Tom said. I'm not, it's not one of my fortes to do this thing, and I don't, my heart's really not into this particular project. So I'm going to have to have the board come across a little more and to put this thing together than myself. I am an advocate of the airport, so I'm a little one sided, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's hear from, let's hear from Warren.
Now, this is Warren. I was one of the few that actually approved the draft.
You did.
Not, I didn't think it had issues, I think it does. And the issue that I had greatest angst over was the fact that those that have properties, buildings, whatever, homes or businesses in the RPZ, while they may be grandfathered, may well find an RPZ cuts their property in half and may in fact be grandfathered with respect to the specific use of the, at the current time, but that's not the same thing as grandfathering all options open to them under the zoning bylaw prior to the overlay district being created. And at that time, we had suggested that town council or others might be helpful in trying to relay what I think is a major issue for the draft, and that is how we protect the property rights of those that have the fortune or misfortune, depending on your view, of having a house or a business in the RPZs, and doing it in a way that would preserve to the maximum extent possible their, their rights and mitigate the adverse impacts on, you know, perhaps flexibility in the future and, and adverse impact on their property values. The merely saying it's always grandfathered doesn't get, doesn't get me there at all because it's grandfathered only for the very specific current use. And I don't know if we have put out feelers, but the suggestion of town council ought to be helpful in trying to at least frame the issues and see how much mitigation we could come up with that could be incorporated in that draft. But I do think your process of trying to get the questions out in public, or in front of us at least, and then in the front of the public, and then, then we can wrestle with how to get them, how to get them done. But again, my principal issue is, is as I've described it, and I thought we'd already put out a request to try and get some, some guidance on that. But that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Warren, this is Catherine, I did just want to address your concern. I do believe that we have heard from town council on that issue, and I may ask Katie to comment as well, that essentially, you know, what you're saying is correct, that under, we don't, it does not even need to be mentioned in the draft bylaw for the runway protection zone, the existing use, the current use is automatically grandfathered in according to mass general law. But you're absolutely right, it's the specific use, the current specific use. The whole purpose of rezoning, just to address the other point that you made, is, is to guide redevelopment. So it is the case, and it is necessarily the case, that redevelopment or, or new uses will be changed when the zoning is changed. If we were to grandfather in all of the potential uses of the current zoning, basically, we should just leave the zoning as it is and not change the zoning. Change in zoning does mean that change in future, that there is change in future use or future development, but existing use is grandfathered in. And I believe, and I may ask Katie to clarify this, that town council and Katie have mentioned that with special permit, there is some flexibility to, to revise the use in, in terms of an existing property owner with an existing use. Katie, is that your hand being raised?
That's actually Mr. Gagin's hand is up.
It's my hand, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin.
May I ask Katie just to comment on my question first, and then we'll get to you, I just recall in previous meetings, and Katie, I think you're muted.
Yes, Madam Chair, so the, I believe the proposed bylaw had a provision that did discuss the, the option for a special permit for, for preexisting, or what would become legal preexisting nonconforming uses to change their use by special permit. And that was specifically, I believe, in, in the proposed bylaw. But you are right, once the zone changes, the existing use at that point in time would become legal, legally pre- would become legal, legally pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, great. And Mr. Gagin, please go ahead.
Yes, I don't know why we talk about specifics and not talk about all of the information that we have. There was an argument made primarily by me, a person who has done a lot of special permitting. And the fact that someone has said it's going to be taken care of in terms of the value of these properties or the ability of any of these properties to be slightly changed in any way is a hoax. I have done this type of permitting. It's very expensive and there's absolutely no guarantee that what is being asked by special permit will be granted. And that's a big fallacy for me in terms of not presenting these issues in a complete circle. All I hear is the administration, including parts of this Board, talking in favor of something we haven't agreed to, agreed to. So, I wish we'd had a more balanced presentation in the future. I'm very upset with the idea that this is already fait accompli and that we're going to grant this bylaw. I think that it would be very helpful for this Board and its members if we were to hire an engineer, an airport engineer, someone that knows a lot more about the detail and the operation of an airport than we do, I suspect, as individuals. That would give us a basis that was at least neutral and not be relying on a source that is trying to push this along. The airport is going to expand. And you know, have to agree with that or not, but you know my position. And I've actually put up a, an article before that was defeated two to one. But I don't want to push this, sweep this under the rug without all of us on the Planning Board having adequate information from experts, expertise that we can then count on. Again, let me say it, as a neutral source. So, one of the recommendations that I would make is that we vote to bring into our discussion in our vetting of this, someone who has expertise and has knowledge that the Board can then tap into and get a balanced, I keep using that word, a balanced presentation. Because right now, Madam Chair, it is not balanced. It is politically motivated.
Okay, Mr. Gagin, I'm going to have to, how to put this? Thank you for your opinion, but I do need to say that this opinion that you've expressed is not correct. I think we do need to express that opinion. No one is trying to push this through. We're discussing our process in moving it forward. And no one is accepting this as a fait accompli. That's the whole purpose of tonight's discussion and of this process is the Select has asked us to, you know, to look at this bylaw, to see what revisions need to be made, if any, and then to come up with a draft bylaw that can gain broad support. So, in light of that request from the Select Board, that's what we're looking at tonight. But no one is considering this as a fait accompli. The first point that we need to do is exactly what you've suggested. We need to get clear information on the issues. We have had several meetings in the past that were organized with experts. And if you want to propose other experts, the Board can consider that and the Town can consider that. But we have spoken to the FAA consultant, Matt Karen, and to Town Council, and they have on a number of occasions given us further information. I think the Board still needs more information. And so, again, I'm suggesting that we put together future meetings, that the Board define its questions. What information do we need? And I'm proposing just that, that we meet with experts, in this case, Town Council and Matt Karen, who is the FAA consultant to the Airport Commission, to get facts in answer to our questions. Now, if you're proposing that we need to meet with other experts and hire outside experts, that can be considered also by the Board. I'm not sure if that is something we can do, but we can consider that. So, I hope clarifies things. And it's very important that you not, you know, make these public assertions in, in the manner that you have.
Madam Chair, I have First Right Amendments under the Constitution, and I'll make any suggestion I think is in favor of the Town of Chatham. So, you're not going to stop that. What the experts that you have pointed out are very biased experts. You have someone from the FAA who we asked if we could meet with them again to see if there's something more that we could do as safety for the airport. That's denied. The engineer that was on that was not an engineer that we had any choice with. That was an engineer that was supported by the Airport Commission.
Which?
Let me finish, please. The statements made by Town Council are inaccurate.
Okay.
So therefore, I would discount the people that have already been through this process with us, and we need some fresh information. We need information that is unbiased. We need information from people who are knowledgeable about that which we are going to approve, and you've never said this, are disapproved. So, all of your comments tonight have been about approving a bylaw. That's not the only option that we have.
Well, we've already disapproved of a bylaw. So, now it's come back to us to revise it, to come up with something that we can approve and that we also feel that the community can support. So, that is the direction we, we need to look to.
But we don't have to approve a bylaw.
I'm just, I'm actually just repeating what the memo from the Select Board said. So.
Select Board is very biased. They voted against all of this. They have, so, I mean, you keep repeating people who have already made their political issues known to this Board. We can't go down this road again and expect, in terms of the definition of insanity, that we could do the same thing, same behavior over and over again and expect a different answer. I would like to approach, I would like the members of this Board to approach this very, very serious question for the Town in a manner that is at least more neutral and not biased. So, we can, once again, vote not to approve a bylaw. We don't have to amend a bylaw. We don't have to put a bylaw together. That's not our job as a Planning Board. But I don't hear anyone saying that.
Tom, I do need to respond, and this is not a political statement. This is just a statement of what our responsibility is as a Planning Board. We may not have a bylaw at this point that we can recommend, but the Planning Board, as you know, as all of you should know, is the legislative body for the Town of Chatham with respect to protective zoning bylaws. So, if an issue comes before the Town or comes before us that does concern zoning bylaws, it is the responsibility of the Planning Board to deal with that issue. It is true that this bylaw that came before us was not recommended by the Planning Board. Actually, I think the vote was split. There were two, three people abstaining. One person voted yes and two or three voted no. So, it was a split vote. So, that is correct. At this time, we do not have a bylaw that we recommend. But the Select Board has asked us to look at this and to revise it and to come up with a protective zoning bylaw that addresses the issue of the runway protection zone in a manner that the Planning Board could support and that could gain broad community support. So, we need to ask the questions that need to be asked, get the information we need to get in order to move forward on that task. So, I'll just, that's all this discussion is about, is how do we move forward on that task? So, I'm going to also ask, I think we've heard from, I'd like to hear from Art. And I think we need to hear from Art and Roger.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yes.
I, I think that the role we're playing here as legis, as legislative body is, is, is an onus that we have. Certainly, I don't like it when legislatures in our government, but or state, decide that they don't want to deal with something. Whether we like it or not, we have an airport. We have businesses that are within an RPZ zone that is defined by the FAA. We, and we have a, a, pretty much a a statement by the, the Board of Selectmen that this is something that concerns them as a community. They're, they're the authority in Town. They're the elected officials in Town. And they're asking us to actually resolve some items associated with this. To say that we're not going to do something with it, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me from the standpoint of what our role is here. I think that the, the process that we go through would be very important. I would like to have a fact, information, like all the other Board members are saying, that, that is a first step. I don't want to make statements out there that this person or that person who provided information is, is false unless there is a basis for us with information that says it is. I'm not going to rely on anybody's opinion on this. I, I, I think we're past doing that. We have to have supportive information that says that this is something that we can do. This is something that is gray area that we need to work on. This is something that we have no flexibility with. Once we understand that, I think that that'll sort of legitimize some parameters of what we can work to. I think we have to resolve the fringe areas of this, as I think Warren had brought up. That made a lot of sense to me. What if you have a piece of property like Musserby has? And essentially, you have the two access points that are within the RPZ, but the entire parcel is outside of it. Shouldn't that have flexibility to be outside of an RPZ guidelines and restrictions? None of that was really flushed out as part of the first piece. I, I think those are the type of things that we can work on and, and actually put in a better perspective. I thought the special permit process was a little bit too restrictive. I'd like to understand a little bit more about what are the flexibilities that we could do associated with that. We do special permits in this town for just about everything because everything is pretty much non-conforming use. So, I don't think this is going to be that much different associated with it. If we have a special permit process on this, I think it's important for us to define what are the parameters associated with that. So, I, I think this is a responsibility that our Board has. And I'm, I'm, I think the concern I have on this is this is going to distract from other things that on our agenda. I, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to deal with a lot of other things unless we resolve this, get this advanced a little bit further so that we can work on other things. And so, I know that Bob, Bob Dubus says he's not, doesn't have a lot to, to offer associated with this, and I can understand that. I would say that this is something that I would offer some time to contribute to it, only because I need to educate myself a little bit more. And the more educated I become on this, the better off I am in refining what, what needs to be done to, to actually perhaps mitigate some of the concerns that we've all heard and said. If there is another method about doing this outside of an overlay, fine. What is it? I don't know what that is. Nobody's identified to me how that could be. Does that work? Does it have any teeth to it? I don't know that. So, I can't respond to something like that. I can say that, okay, what's, give me some more information about how that would go. I think each one of us is going to have to have a little homework ourselves to educate us. If the Board thinks that we need to have our own separate advisor on it, that's fine. But I think that's a Board decision, not an individual decision. If we can't support that as a Board and the Town can't support us requesting that, then I think we, we got to go to some different of avenue of, of actually seeking out some of that information. So, there, there's a homework element on this on the first piece. I think we, we have to work with the airport on this. It doesn't mean that we resolve all the issues to the satisfaction of any party on this. But I think what we have to do is we have to start, step through a process on this. And I'm sure we're going to have to adjust it as we go forward. And I think as a Board, we should do that. We should adjust it, make some decisions, change, go on to the next step. And I, I, I think when, when the, when the Board of Selectmen sent out and said, this is an item that is of concern to the Town and has to be resolved. The Planning Board is a legislative body. The onus is on us to actually start and work the process. That's what our job is, no different than what we did on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. We worked the process. And that's what I say, I'm thinking that we have to do here. So, I, I would like to get this advanced enough so that we can get back to some of our other business. I think this is going to be a distraction until we actually move enough of it along far enough so that we can do other things. And, and you, you know what I'm so earnest about. I'm earnest about updating some of our rules and regulations. But I think this is going to circumvent even that. We'll, we'll have to work around that, too. And it, it's, it's a matter of what are our priorities that are being put in front of us right now? It's no different than what any other legislative body would be put forward. They have a long agenda, but here's the thing that is, is an issue of concern. This is going to take a little bit more homework, I think, than just the average zoning bylaw. I'm familiar with going through and doing bylaws. I've been doing bylaws for 20 years. So, I'm familiar with a process of what has to be done. But I think this one's a little bit twist for me. And I'm more than willing to spend the time to educate myself just so that I can share what I've learned to the rest of the Board members. And I, I will, I will do it in a fashion that says, well, here's the document that I read that said that this is, this is a way to go. If I don't have something to back it up, my word doesn't mean anything at this point. And I think that we have to take that tactic with whoever we work with. If it's the Airport Commission or their consultants or, or our Town Council, it's not just a statement that they can make verbally to us. Show me ev, evidence and information to support that so that we have something to stand behind. Because I think if we're going to go to the Town meeting and everybody's going to chew, chew this alive, if we have sound information that said that this is the direction and why it has to be this way, and we don't have X, Y, Z alternative. We only have A, B, and C alternative, and that's the way we went. That's going to help us later on down the road. Whether you like it or not, I think we have to step through this. And we'll have to see where we end up with, whether it's, you know, six months or 12 months down the road. But the, this is something that our Board needs to take the initiative on. So, I'm going to throw my head in the ring only because I want to get back to doing my rules and regulations. But I understand that this might be a priority at this point on the short term.
Great. Thank you, Arthur. And so, Roger, your comment on our process moving forward?
Yeah, I guess my comment is that I would, I'd like to, I guess, I'm tired of us talking about these issues like we, Catherine, we just throw each other into the pit. And we get five minutes and we stop, and we come back and visit every 12 months. We don't get anywhere. I think as far as the airport's concerned, in a lot of ways, whether we want an airport, we don't want an airport, or we don't want, I don't want, I'm not just looking at it. In a lot of ways, the airport's been very upfront, telling us what they need and what it's all about. When I looked at really even the, what's, you know, that's the master plan. How do you put it? I guess it's sort of, sort of a sense of existence.
The master plan, yeah.
Diraciously, the airport has more information available to us, and I never thought I'd ever say this. But they have more information available to us in many ways, whether we like to, like to, even the master, they, they run, the airport plan, and I've done a lot of homework on this. And sometimes I really feel like, wow. And in many ways, they must be frustrated with us because we don't, we don't understand it. We want to interpret a district. We really don't want to really look at what land use is all about, where they have really identified a 10 by 10 shed. And whether it's, but we don't, we think, oh, that's offensive. They told us that nothing could be. Whether we want, and, and Art is so right. I mean, when I hear the idea. I mean, when I hear the idea of West Chatham Neighborhood Center, I don't want to hear that word until we deal with the airport. And incentives and people coming, developers, we've got a problem with the airport. I mean, I know you're grinning. I don't want to grin about it anymore. We have to address it. We have to, I go around it, we have to go through it. And I think we really have to start with a, a tour of the airport so that at least we can even leave that tour, being on the same page. But I have, I just think, I've actually talked to someone on airport planning. I mean, someone that's actually punctual, we're retired from. I don't think sometimes we like the answers. And I think that we have to, Art said, we have to really, we, I guess we have to all get educated. But I don't think it's going to be that difficult, but I don't think meeting every three months and throwing someone is the, what's your comment? And feeling by the time we leave, just throw it in the basket and maybe won't bring it up for another year. And I think I just know, it was about a year ago, we were talking about something with the airport. It was June 21st or something. It's a year later and we're nowhere. West Chatham Neighborhood Center is nowhere. Affordable housing, we failed miserably. We have to, this has to get done, but I think it has to start with the tour. I mean, we have to be all the same place and not with this pit. And we really ask those questions in a, in a different environment. But the airport really has a lot of the answers. And again, I really feel that I'm not, I'm just being neutral. Maybe we, we don't like to, we don't like the answers, but I think we have to ask the questions and, and get those answers. But that's right, it's going to be a little bit, a little bit work with us to really get a better understanding. But I don't, it's, it's, it's not impossible. But it, it's, it has to be done quickly because he's so right. We shouldn't even be dealing with anything else in West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Do we take care of the airport that could possibly swallow it up? So that's, that's it. Yeah, that's what, get the tour going. That's what we need.
Okay, good. All right. So I think that in general, the board, we need, we want to get more information. And we want more education. So that's the first step. I think suggestions have been made, you know, as we, as we attempted to do before, to meet with the experts in our case. At the moment, that would be people like our town council and Matt Karen, who is the FAA consultant to the airport commission. And also perhaps representatives of the airport commission. And, but we need to define our questions. We need to decide what information do we need to be able to make decisions about this bylaw? So, so, and so a couple of ideas have come forward that we, that we start to organize future meetings with people who can answer our questions. We also have to define our questions. Suggestions has been made to do a, a site visit to the airport. I'm just going to comment that I think a lot of the answers to our questions can come by looking at the, the maps and the aerials and, you know, a lot of the detailed information that we need to make decisions may, may not need to come from a site visit, but certainly if the board would like to do that, you know, we're certainly welcome to. Also, just in terms of timing and in terms of staff, Roger, I hear your frustration. But I do think that a lot of these things have gone through a process. West Chatham, actually, we did come, we had to hold on it because of the winter holidays. But I think we did bring it along with Cape Cod Commission. I think we brought it to a place where we have a solid draft. That when we pick it up again, it's, you know, we have a few refinements to make, but we have a very solid draft bylaw that's incorporated form-based code. Regarding this overlay district for the RPZ, as I described at the beginning of this discussion, it did go through an alternative process where similar to a citizen's petition, the airport commission put together a draft. The role that the planning board played was to hold the public hearing for that draft. As I mentioned, it was a split vote in terms of the recommendation of the planning board that went back to select board in what, January, February of this year. Select board decided not to put it on the warrant for annual town meeting 2021. But to remand it to the planning board to pick up again, to revise it, to review it. And to create a draft bylaw that would gain the, the support of the planning board and also broad community support. That's almost a direct quote from memo from the select board. So, so a process has been done over the last few months. It hasn't just been sitting there. And now we are, that's why we're having this discussion because now it's come back to our plate and we need to consider how to move forward. Also, if I could just remind the board, in the interim, we had a principal planner who was on maternity leave and who now has taken another job in order to spend more time with her family. So there's been a staff shortage at the community development department initially when Ally wasn't available. What the thought was, was just due to the lack of staff that we actually couldn't move forward on any long-range planning efforts for a while. So that's, you know, you're experiencing these stalls and these delays due to a variety of reasons. We do anticipate that we will have a new planner on board soon. And, you know, once everyone gets up and running, that we will be able to move forward with all of our various long-range planning initiatives. I would have to say that I agree with both Art and Roger that because of its effect on West Chatham, we do need to resolve the issue of the RPZ before continuing with West Chatham. And it is something that, like it or not, has come to our plate. And we are the legislative body and whatever our opinion is personally about the airport or about this or that, this particular action is the responsibility of the planning board. Again, just a reminder to the planning board, it has, we have asked town council this before. Even if somehow the town, which would be a long process, would choose to eventually close the airport, even if that decision was made, which would be a long process to get to that decision. Just due to the nature of the grant assurances and, and the contracts that we have obligations to, it would be 20 to 40 years before the airport would actually close. So I just wanted to suggest to the board that the idea of implementing zoning that's appropriate for the runway protection zone, even if you completely want to close the airport is actually something that's, you know, a valid action to consider because of the length of time involved in any other outcome. So I'm going to suggest to the board, I'm hearing that we do need more information. And we need expert information. I do see that. So, and also just due to the staffing issues, I'm going to suggest that we, we think, and also due to the summer, may not be the best time to organize these meetings, that we may be looking at late August or early September as a time that we could organize another meeting that could be a joint meeting with experts where we can get more information to answer our questions. And so that's what I would suggest. I want to hear what the board would feel about that. Whether there's support from the board to do a site visit at the airport prior to that time. So Art, what do you think about that? And again, this is just a scheduling issue.
Madam Chair, I've had my hand up. Tom Gagin.
Yes, I have a couple of hands up. I'd like to hear the response from the board. So if you don't mind, Tom, could I hear from Art first? And I will call on you.
Your suggestions are fine with me. I think that it would be helpful if the board members would put together some collective thoughts and get it into, you know, the community development, whether it's Katie or whoever to collate all of this so that it can be compiled to the point of, here's the information that our board members would like to have. So that when we do have a sit down, one, there will be responses that say, okay, I'll have, that will avoid saying, I'll have to get back to you on it. Cause let's, let's start moving forward with some feedback rather than waiting, you know, asking, waiting, asking, waiting. All right. So maybe the first onus is on us to ask a lot of questions with a lot of information. And, and hopefully we'll get some information that deals with it and not just a verbal response. I don't think, I think we're beyond a verbal response on any of this right now, only because we're not knowledgeable about this. Somebody has to provide us with something to help, provide us some information that says why we can and can't do certain things. We're, we're a body that goes about things in a very formulaic way when it deals with zoning bylaws. And the expectation on this is that we're, we're, we're not going to adhere to any of that only because we, we have a lack of information. There's a lot of unanswered questions associated with what we should be addressing associated with, with this RPZ because of all of the experience that we've been going through with all the other bylaws that we've done. Plus the actual applications that we see coming before us. There's all sorts of twists and turns. There was a huge amount that was done associated with seven, 782 and 784 with what they're trying to do with sites. And that's, that's going to be something that we're going to have to understand and deal with and say, well, here's our experience. How, how does that affect being in an RPZ? All right. And I'm not quite sure, and, and I don't have any information that tells me at this point that, well, it's, it's a black and white issue. I don't know that that is an answer that would be acceptable, not just to me as a board member, but to get anything through town meeting. So what is a resolution that should be done? But if, if we don't start with, whether it's a schedule is in August or beginning of September, that's fine. But I think the, some of the onus should be on the board members to start documenting something that says, here's all the things of concerns and questions that I have information that I'm seeking. And let's compile that, let's put it all together and, and, and provide that to the airport commission and their consultants and have them provide that to us so that it helps us understand a little bit more. And then might focus them to understand that these are the things that we know that we're going to have to address because we've gone through this process before. Maybe, maybe the airport commission doesn't understand that the process that we go through and what has to be done in order to get something through town meeting. Two-thirds vote is not something that's easy to do. And, and unless there is going to be a support from all, all, all the related bodies before it gets to the town meeting, it's a very circumspect that we'll actually get an approval at town meeting itself. So what if, if that the goal is, the goal that we have, if we're, we're, we're looking at accomplishing something for that, then, then let's keep that in mind associated with this and decisions should be based on that. Not just, we're only going to do it this way or that way. I, I think the, the final legislative body on this is going to be town meeting. It's, it's not any of us. We're just trying to advance it to the point of getting it to them so that they can make the decision on this. That's it, Catherine.
Thank you, Arthur. Yes, I would agree with that. And so I hear what you're suggesting is that before we have a joint meeting with experts, for example, town council, Matt Karen, members of the airport commission, that the planning board should take a look at the draft and make decisions. What additional information do we need? Number one, in order to just deal with the draft and consider it. And number two, to address any potential revisions that we see are needed in the draft. So maybe the first, our next meeting should be just the planning board sitting together with the draft bylaw to consider what further information we need and try to put together a list of our questions that will then be addressed at a joint meeting. Is that what you're suggesting, Arthur?
Yes, that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, great. All right. So, so those are some steps. So Tom, I do see your hand raised. I'm sorry for the delay.
Yes, may I speak?
Yes, please go ahead.
I've suggested and you keep, you as a chair, continue to ignore a suggestion. The suggestion would have to be approved by those board members. The suggestion, which I feel very strongly about, is that we need new input from someone who is an expertise in the, has expertise in the area. It isn't even mentioned as a possibility. So I would like to make a motion, if I may, that this board engage with an airport engineer so that we may sit with the airport engineer and ask of that person. Also invite that, the engineer that we would hire to come on a sidewalk with us and help explain what we're going to be told on that sidewalk. I would feel much more comfortable with that approach than I am with the approach that is presented before. Particularly when you talk about town council. They came, he came to this board with only one recommendation. And I thought that personally, I thought that there were other avenues that we could look at, but they never got discussed. So my motion briefly is that we look into hiring an airport engineer that this board would have access to.
All right. So let's consider that as a board and, but first I am going to ask Katie about funding for this proposal. Are there actions that if the planning board feels we should hire an independent consultant other than, rather than using town council and Matt Karen and those already available to?
Madam Chair, that, that's a misrepresentation of what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that you already have mentioned multiple times people that we have spoken to and have talked to the board. I haven't suggested that those people remain silent at all.
Okay.
What I think should happen is the airport commission should pay for an engineer, airport engineer. It can't ever come out of their funds. We do this with boards all the time. We ask somebody for peer review. We don't have a peer review in, in this process. We have a review that I think is tainted, but that's my personal opinion. And I will supply information when appropriate, as we get together as a board from what I've discovered from my investigation. So again, I'm asking for board approval to hire, have the airport commission hire an engineer that we can use. That shouldn't be on the onus of this board to pay for that. It's the airport commission that wants the bylaw passed. Let them support that.
At this, yes. So I, I do need to just check in with Katie about the funding for this petition, for this position and potential pathways for that funding. I think the, I'm happy to have the board take a vote on it. But we do need to understand what, you know, what we're voting on if we're voting, you know, and whether we can approve the funding or whether the approval for funding has to go through other channels. And so Katie, can I ask you about that? How that would be accomplished? In the past, I know when the planning board has, I mean, sometimes we've hired additional staff, temporary staff for the community development department to help us draft a bylaw to actually help with the writing. That's a little bit of a different scenario. So I just want to ask about if Katie could comment on the funding for a, a potential consultant here?
Sure. Madam Chair, you know, as the, as the budget for this year has already been done, we did not identify funds for, to hire a consultant. Though Mr. Gagin is speaking of, you know, asking the airport commission to, to utilize some of their funds for that purpose. If the board was inclined to want to have an additional consultant available for questions and the board votes that, we can cer, I can certainly talk with the town manager about identifying funds and see if that's an option and then report back to the board.
Okay, great. All right. So with that pathway in mind, we have a motion on the floor to research hiring an independent consultant to advise the planning board. An independent airport engineer. Do I have a second to the motion? And again, let's do this formally. The motion is always made in the positive. And if you disagree with the course of action, you would simply vote no. All right. So do I have a second to this? To hire an independent consultant, an airport engineer to advise the planning board on the issue of the proposed? on the issue of the proposed draft bylaw for the RPC. So I, I don't get a second. Um, Mr. Gagan, I do see your hand is still raised. Is that from before? So the motion?
Catherine, Catherine Bobdubis, I wanna second his motion.
You do wanna second the motion, Bob?
Yes, but I'm gonna tell you the reason why. And it's not, it's not to fund for an engineer. It's to find out how we can attain funding for an engineer. To come with us and, and, and educate us. If we take a walk on the airport and come back and look at some, some of our maps that we have, to educate all of us on what we're trying to do. There's gotta be some airport engineer that's gone through this a million times. The same thing happens in every town, I'm sure. And so we need somebody like that to educate us on what we're trying to do. We're in the dark. We're, we're, we're trying to do the best we can. Art says we need information. This would be the person to get information. Tom's saying we need information. Everybody needs information. I need to get educated on what we're trying to do a little bit and how, how to go about it the right way, not, not just come out with this, here you go, bloop. They gave, they handed us a piece of paper with a wedge on it, said, this is it. Here you go. No, we need to know why, what and for. So that's why I'm gonna second it.
Okay, that's fine, but I think we can't change the motion. I think the motion is to look into hiring an independent consultant. I think as an adjunct to that, Katie has?
Madam Chair, I would amend the motion if it so pleases, Bob.
But Katie Donovan has also added that she will explore funding possibilities with town manager. Do you wanna add that to the motion, Tom?
No, what I, what you're missing, uh, from my motion is I want the airport commission, uh, to fund us. They have their own funding. And why are we going to the town manager to talk about how the airport commission supports an independent engineer for us?
All right, so Tom's motion is now that we look into hiring an independent consultant, which will be funded by the airport commission to advise the board and provide information, how to move ahead, uh, with this proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw for the RPC. So Bob Dubis, do you second that amended motion?
Yes, I will. And, and, uh, Tom Watts, I, I don't care where the funding comes from. I, I think the airport should, should, I think the airport should fund it because this is all about the airport and, and, uh, all about their use. They, they want us to make a, uh, uh, an addendum or whatever to, to make this thing work. Well, like I said, we need information. So however it gets here, it gets here. So yeah, I, I, I figured they should, they should support us.
Yes, but in terms of process, we just need to clearly define the motion and clearly define the second. So I think we've done that. So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru, how do you vote?
Well, I, I, I need to have a clarification on this. So the only thing that we're voting on is that we're going to get an expert consultant and it's supposed to be funded by the airport. There's no other options. If there's no, if that's not an option and there's another funding source, we can't go there because we didn't vote on it that way. It's so restrictive. It sort of says, well, why are we tying our hands? I don't know if the airport can provide funds for us for this, but maybe there's another way that the town manager can fund this. What do we care where the fund comes up? We know that we need some expert advice. So I'm, I'm sort of against being overly restrictive. It's, I'm not against the funding of doing something, but I, I don't wanna be overly restrictive and say, let's, let's, well, we, we gotta get it from the airport because this is the airport. It, you know, this is all the town. So come on, gang, let's, this stuff. Words get to the point that we're, that we're gonna tie our hands to the point that we're going nowhere on it.
Yes.
That's my clarification, so.
I'd like to clarify Art's, uh, question.
Um, I have to call on Katie first. She's had her hand raised. And so, uh, Katie, could you please go ahead?
Sure, Madam Chair. So my concern is that the board can request that the airport commission pay for a consultant, but I don't know that the board can require that to happen. The airport commission already has a consultant that they utilize and I, as, and, and they do pay for. So I'm not sure that, again, the board can request this, but I'm not sure that there's any requirement for them to follow, the, the airport commission to follow through on the request. And therefore, I would just caution, as we're moving forward and taking the vote, that, that, that that be kept in mind at this point in time.
And Katie, this is, may I just ask, the consultant they use is, are you referring to Matt Karen?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So as Katie mentioned, the airport already has an expert consultant and this is Matt Karen, who has made himself available to us to provide answers to our questions. So that's already in place. So I think, um, there's been a suggestion from Katie that we, we can't require that the airport commission fund this. So I would ask, Tom, that you amend your motion to, uh, that the board look into hiring another independent consultant and that Katie will follow up, you know, with, to find an appropriate source of funding if the board votes that we want to hire, you know, another independent consultant.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagan?
Yes.
To us, um, information, uh, there's been no, uh, purported on my part that there's a single source of information, uh, to this board. I haven't precluded in any motion that the other sources that have been mentioned over and over again can't weigh in on the information that we need as the members of the board. This is not a unilateral, one-sided thing. I just think it's more information to make us more knowledgeable. That's the point of it. And as far as the airport, may I speak?
Yes.
As far as the airport having its own consultant, I mean, have we ever heard about the fox in front of the chicken house? I mean, I want someone neutral. I want someone that we have control over. That's the point of having someone independent that has knowledge that we can rely on. Otherwise, to me, it's tainted information. So if it makes it more sensible for the board to vote for us to look for funding or request funding, I have no issue with that. But we have, as a board, asked for independent engineering when someone brings, an applicant brings a project to us and we ask for a, another engineering firm, uh, to do a peer review. So I don't think this is any different than that. But if it makes the board members easier to understand my point, then if, if, uh, that's the issue, then let's just look for some funding through the, uh, the, uh, town, uh, town manager. But again, it has to be, I'm just gonna underline this a thousand times. What I'm requesting is for someone who is independent of the process that we're already involved in, not precluding any of the other interests that we've heard from. That's my point. So I will amend the motion to ask for an independent airport engineer to meet with this board, to have this board talk about the issues. And it can come from a funding request, uh, that, uh, is, is from the town manager. So simply a motion to require an independent engineer that's versed in airport knowledge to be available to this board and its members.
All right, great. So that's the motion before the board and?
Bob Dubis will second that motion for an independent funding for an independent engineer.
Let's leave the funding out of it. Funding to be determined, um, that, but what we're, what the motion is, is that we're, with the board, the board wants to hire an independent, um, airport engineer to advise the board on their questions regarding a draft for the RPC.
That's what I'm gonna second.
Yes, so Bob is second, Tom has made the motion, Bob has seconded it. The motion is always made in the positive. If you disagree with the motion, you can vote no. If you agree with it, you vote yes. So Art Spru, how do you vote?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Uh, Warren Chain, no.
Roger Griffin? Uh, Roger, I think you're muted. You're still muted.
Sorry about that. Roger Griffin, yes.
Tom Gagan?
Yes.
Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, yes.
Uh, and this is Catherine Halpern, I'll vote yes. All right, so we've defined our first step is to gather more information. We've also taken a vote. The board is interested and wants to pursue hiring an independent consultant. Katie Donovan will follow up with potential sources of funding for that consultant to advise the board on their questions. Tom Gagan? Uh, you might be muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in order to have this, um, motion which has just passed, uh, I'd like to see if you would agree to a subcommittee of two or three of us to do the research, uh, on this person we wish to hire. I don't think that that should be done by one person on the board either. So if we're going to really vet this process, I think members of the board, I'd be happy to be one of them, if you so choose, um, to look into the credits or the credibility of an engineer to ask, that we can ask and have questions answered. Again, Art and others want to move this thing forward. The roadblock here potentially is that Katie, uh, can't find anyone to do any funding. It's a separate issue. But if it, again, advances our knowledge of what we need to do to vote for a bylaw, overlay a district bylaw, then, again, I think we should have, uh, a, a subcommittee to get that information to this board so that we can, uh, follow through, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, there's, uh, Katie Donovan has her hand raised. I think, Katie, could we hear from you?
Sure, Madam Chair. So, um, I don't have any problem with that request, but I would caution that any subcommittee will need to post, um, their, uh, their meetings and minutes will need to be taken at any, any subcommittee, um, that's voted of the board. I will also say that we, as a town, are required to follow, uh, chapter thirty B, uh, the state's procurement laws. And so regardless of, um, not, not regardless, but we will have to likely request quotes from at least three consultants and, um, and, and be, um, and, and follow the, the proper procedures, um, set forth by the state's procurement laws. So I just want the board members to understand that as well. Not that you wouldn't have any say in the matter over who was ultimately hired, but we do have to go through a process.
Great, thank you, Katie. And Warren, I see your hand is raised.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, uh, two comments. We're talking about not having enough information and not being qualified to assess the information that we do have about, uh, the issues on the RPCs. Uh, I, I certainly, uh, feel reasonably educated about the issues involved and I certainly don't feel qualified. And I don't know that I see anybody on the board qualified to, to pick an expert that we're gonna rely on. That itself could take a long time, even if you had all the funding in the world. I also have issues, uh, or questions that come up about open meeting laws, kind of things. It just, it seems to me to create, um, a tremendous amount of, uh, problems. Uh, we voted to do it, so I support that. But the idea of having a committee of people that are saying we're all ignorant, being the people who are gonna decide who is going to be the expert, seems to be folly.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Warren. And I have Katie again raising, raised her hand. Can we, I hear from you?
Madam Chair, can I suggest that I make a report back to the board at the next meeting on the, on, on a path forward, um, just so I can confirm, A, a funding source and B, the process that we will need to follow, um, and, and then advise the board to that and then we can move forward, uh, from there at that point in time.
I think that's a good suggestion. I think that's a good suggestion. We have to be clear, again, on our process of what's involved in hiring the consultant before we even move ahead on that process. So I think that would be, that would be correct. Thank you, Katie. Warren, is your hand up from before or did you raise it again?
My hand is up, Madam Chair. Tom Gagan?
Okay, I don't, okay, sorry, Tom. I did not see your hand. Please go ahead.
Um, I agree with Katie. That does make sense. But what I'm confused about is the open meeting bylaw ruling that in order for us to violate, uh, open meeting bylaw, would have to have a quorum present. Uh, am I wrong on that, Katie?
Yes, the open meeting law, uh, the, the attorney general's office has ruled that any subcommittee, whether it's, whether it makes up a quorum or not, any subcommittee, uh, appointed by the, by a board still needs to follow the open meeting law rules and requirements. So yes, unfortunately, even if it's a, even if it's a subcommittee of two, the open meeting law still needs to be followed for, uh, meeting minutes and, um, and I believe an open meeting as well.
And public broadcast.
Thank you for that, Katie. The one thing that this board does not want to do ever, if possible, is to get into a situation of violating, uh, open meeting bylaws. I think we've been very cognizant of that. And I think so far, at least in my history in the board, we haven't been involved in that process or that problem. But thank you for that information.
Yeah, and just as, this is Catherine, just as a point of information, we have in the past, uh, in my, uh, work on this board, have had subcommittees in the past and they've been subcommittees of two or three people. And we've always had minutes. We've recorded the meetings. We've posted announcements of the meetings, you know, as per law. Uh, and we did follow, you know, even though it was only two or three people, we did follow all of the open meeting law requirements for those subcommittees that we've had in the past. So, um, so if we do have a subcommittee, we will need to do that. But I think it is wise to have Katie back to us with more specifics on the procedures that we will need to follow, uh, to research hiring this independent consultant. So that's our next step. Uh, and then when I would, I just wanna propose that's our next step. Then maybe the next step is that we want to put together, that we want, then we wanna decide how to move forward on hiring the independent consultant, create the subcommittee if we need to. Uh, and then also, as Arthur has brought out and others have brought out, we wanna actually put together the list of questions that we have, the list of information that we need to, um, get from this independent consultant. So that's just a summary of the path forward that I see we've defined tonight. And before I ask for any other comments, can I ask for any comments from board members regarding that path moving forward? Warren?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I think that's fine. I personally have some questions. I'd be happy to submit them, uh, ahead of time so that they can be, um, collected from the other board members and then, uh, perhaps, um, you know, simplified. And then we would, uh, moving towards a list of things that we wanna get answers to. And I don't know that, uh, we need to delay submitting what our questions are, be they specific or be they broad, uh, either one. It seems to me, what, knowing what those questions are, can't help but assist in trying to find the right, uh, engine, uh, airport engineer, expert, to help us work through those questions. And/or to get input from other, uh, resources within the town, including town council or the airport commission's, uh, outside expert. So I'm happy to do that. With respect to, I'll mention this too, I, I personally, at this point, uh, don't see a benefit. I personally, at this point, don't see a benefit, for me personally, to have a site inspection. I think I would suggest that doing that ought to be after you've got an expert who's tried to address some of our issues, and then we could, then a site visit, even for me, might, might make some sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Warren. This is Kathryn. I'm just going to suggest, I agree with you. We don't need to wait to put our questions together until we have a consultant. We can be working on that at the same time that we're taking steps to research finding a consultant. We can put on our agenda for future meetings that we begin to sit and formulate our questions. So I think we can do that at the same time. And I'd also just want to express agreement with you that I think a site visit is much more valuable after we determine what our questions are and, and get some answers to the questions. It may be more fruitful after we define some of the issues. But we can determine that in future meetings. Any other comments from the board about how we've summarized our steps of action moving forward? I do see Huntley's, I think it's Huntley's hand is raised. It says Airport Commission. And I apologize for keeping you waiting. But if you'd like to go ahead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want the planning board to know that the Airport Commission will be more than happy to answer questions and work with the planning board on this issue. We have resources. Mr. Karen, our engineer, who is, as has been alluded to, is probably the fox in front of the chicken house or whatever that expression was. But nevertheless, he's available for, for conversation and comment. Our legal counsel could be available as well. And if any of you would like to email the commission@airportcommission@chatham-ma.gov with any of your questions, feel free to do that at any time. We'll cooperate as much as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you, Huntley. So any other comments? I mean, I think, unless there's other comments from the board, I think we've accomplished-
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Ms. Gibbs has her hand up?
Yes, I do see that. I just wanted to make a comment before we move to comment. If there's no other comments from the board, I think we've accomplished what we set out to accomplish in this initial meeting in that we've defined the first few steps of our path moving forward with this issue. So I think this discussion was fruitful. And if there's no other comments from the board, I will move to public comment. And I do see that Ms. Gibbs has her hand up. Thank you, Katie, for mentioning that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I will just refer to what Huntley Harrison just said. This board has had before you Matt Karen, who is an aviation engineering firm, an FAA representative. The legal counsel that the Airport Commission has hired had previously worked for the FAA and Town Council, as well as the Airport Commission, all have said the same thing. I think the idea that all of them somehow are in cahoots and biased because they all have the same answer, I think is an unfortunate thing to say. The Airport Commission already went through the RFP process of finding a good attorney that specializes in aviation. And I would suggest to you in your own package, you have all the information you need. I mean, the RPZ is defined by the FAA. It gives you all the dimensions. It tells you exactly where it is. It doesn't change. It's two of all general aviation airports. And there are circulars out there that tell you exactly what the FAA expects within that RPZ. So I think it's a waste of money and a waste of time for you to go and look for somebody else in the hopes that they will give you an answer that five other professionals have not. And I think it's a waste of money. And I would hope, if you want to move this along and you want to get the West Chatham developed, you shouldn't waste your time. It's going to take 90, 120 days by the time you go through all the interviews and put it out to bid and all that kind of stuff. And you're not going to find anybody that's going to give you different answers. It is, no attorney is going to be biased and hurt his reputation by giving you an answer that isn't true. You know, that's, that's just simply not what aviation lawyers do. So I would hope that you would skip this part, get all your questions together, and take Huntley up on the offer, and they can come back and tell you the same thing that they told you before, that this is what it is, and there are ways to mitigate any damages that you're concerned about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Elaine. Well, let's hear back, you know, from Katie, what the process will be about researching, hiring this independent consultant. And if I could just make a comment to the board, I do appreciate Huntley's request, but it's also important that all information is gathered together and is presented to the whole board in public meeting. So if you have individual questions that you send directly to Huntley, we should, again, bring up those questions in the board meeting with the answers, together with the whole board and in public meeting. It's just important that the full information is always considered by the full board in public meeting. So if you email Huntley, please, you know, copy Katie Donovan. Please copy me so that we can keep these on file so that when the board next meets on these, on this issue, that we can review all the questions and all the answers together with the whole board and in public forum. Okay? All right, so we do have another item on the agenda, and that is chairman's comments. And what we wanted to consider tonight is whether or not we want to move, change our meeting format from virtual to in-person after the end of June. I would like to make a comment. Right now, we do not have a July 11th meeting scheduled. And if there is a matter, for example, like an A and R that comes up that's required to be heard on July 11th, the request that's come from Community Development Department is that we do that meeting, that we continue virtually, just because there will be an absence of staff support at that time. But right now, we do not have a July 11th meeting scheduled. So what we're considering is for the July 25th meeting. Beginning then, do we want to move to in-person meetings? Of course, that is after the July 15th deadline. So Katie, have there been any updates to that July 15th deadline?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair. I know that it's being discussed, but I have not heard specifically whether or not that order has been extended beyond July 15th. So my suggestion would be that, that we have an action that we would at least be, if the board wanted to move back to in-person, that we would, we could vote that. Perhaps for a hybrid meeting, I think hybrid would be allowed. Certainly even after July 15th. However, the quorum requirements may not be able to be met through virtual participation. However, the, the audience could still participate in a hybrid manner.
Okay, so what we would, what our vote would be tonight would be to move to the hybrid format for July 25th. Is that correct? Or for all, for our future meetings after July 15th?
That's correct.
All right. So, so do I have a motion from the board to that effect?
Bob Dubus wants to make that motion.
All right, and do I?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, was that Warren?
It's Warren, I'll second it.
Great, so let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Tom Gaggen?
Tom Gaggen approve.
And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
And this is Kathryn Halpern, I also approve. So we'll be moving to the hybrid format after July 15th, which will be for our July 25th meeting. So if there's no other comments from the board and other public comments on any matter for tonight, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Bob Dubus makes that motion again.
Okay, do I have a second to the motion?
Art Spru second.
Thank you, so let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Tom Gaggen?
Tom Gaggen approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
And this is Kathryn Halpern, I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. Let's note the time as 8:36, and-